Me, Nylan Poirier, and then Amy Guile, or however you pronounce your names. I'm very sorry if I mispronounced anything. So we're going to go to Raquel and Ariella Luna next.
Hi, good evening. I'm not really going to be talking that long, just really short. I just, my daughter wanted to share her opinions, everything that she's feeling, and I wanted to encourage that. I know that there are many opinions about what we want, what we think is safe. And so I just want to just say thank you to the Board of Ed and Dr. Youngberg, whoops, sorry, for time to just listen to all of us. And I know that it's a hard situation, there's a lot of opinions. And I agree, we all want to be safe. So without further ado, my daughter Aurelia. All right, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Aurelia Luna. I go to North Wyndham School, and I am in third grade. I live in Jackson Street. I miss my friends, and I think we should go to school in person. We are washing our hands and using hand sanitizer. I think kids should be able to play at the playground when we go back. And thank you.
All right, and that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you Aurelia. I love to, we love to hear from the students, thank you, and parents, and teachers. We love to hear from you all. Thank you for stepping up today to speak to us. So now we're going to go to Erin Westerman.
Hi, my name is Erin Westerman. I am a third grade teacher at North Wyndham Elementary School. I teach Spanish in the Compañeros program. I actually am one of Aurelia's teachers. And so I just want to say, number one, thank you Aurelia for everything that you just said. I know that it's really, really hard to get up here, and even on the internet and speak in front of a bunch of people. And we talk every day about speaking your mind and standing up for what you think is right. And I'm very, very proud of you. So that's thing number one. Thing number two is I am here today to advocate for keeping our virtual Wednesdays, our flex Wednesdays. I believe that that is a more consistent solution to go back. You know, however this all plays out, I think that that needs to stay. That has been the only consistent thing for teachers and for students the entire year. Like was mentioned before, that has been consistent in terms of people being able to work and have their other obligations outside of their homes. I think as a teacher, that is literally the only day that I have time to keep up with virtual grading, to meet with other teachers, to do PPTs and all of those meetings. I, I teach virtual yoga to anyone at my school who wants to come. And we really do take Wellness Wednesday to a whole nother, to a whole nother level. So I think that that's really important. I'm honestly worried about the mental health of our staff and of our students if we continue to give them inconsistency. And I think this is one way we can keep a little bit of consistency in this ever-changing situation. I also think for us as teachers, it has been an absolute saving grace because we have been asked this year, and we have done it because we love our students and we love what we do. But we're doing many times the work of a normal school year, making things virtual and all of that, and totally differentiating and changing our lessons, putting them online, doing things for hybrid. And so that really is a day to catch up on all of that work, to continue to make our lessons engaging for students, and to do all of the backend stuff that goes into teaching. So again, I'm here to advocate for those Wednesdays to stay a virtual flex day. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, oops, somebody's in the car. Could you mute yourself, please? The next person I have up here is Caitlin Ethan.
Good evening, Wyndham community. My name is Caitlin Ethan. I'm a second grade teacher at CH Barrow STEM Academy. I firmly believe that we must go back to school on February 1st and continue thereafter. I've talked to many other staff members and have seen, and I've heard, the grave downfalls of remote learning. Our attendance numbers may be at a high percentage rate, but it really does not account for the lack of progress and engagement from our students. Our staff in this district, I know, is working night and day to provide the best teaching that we possibly can, including myself. However, staying in this learning model, I really believe can lead to grave consequences. Our students who receive intervention and services are missing meetings and time for explicit instruction despite great efforts from both the staff and the admin. And it puts them at a further deficit. Students who were once robust learners, excited, are now checking out and they're struggling to gain the vigor and the growth mindset that is truly needed for life. The burnout of staring at a screen all day has been highlighted more than ever for both students and staff. The mental health of these children and these adults is being compromised. Our students who are already all virtual are affected by this as well, but I feel that their expectations are to be home. And it seems that many of them have come to terms with this, or their parents are actually deciding to send them into school. I appreciate the Wellness Wednesdays initiative, truly, but it is not enough. Most teachers have meetings during that time, lesson planning, or needed off-screen time. Teacher, teaching itself has always been very stressful. Obviously, these times have made it greater. But usually it's with great reward and with great success for our students. That's why we're here and we're enduring this times for the students. But now with the extended remote model, some students are not being successful or making progression like they could if they were with us in the classroom. And without the fundamentals of this learning process in its true form, teaching is not only difficult, learning for our students is not only difficult, but it's starting to become unbearable. Other districts have managed to stay open and have kept their buildings as safe as they can. And we have seen many of our students, I know are unique to this at Barrows, but have withdrawn and have actually gone back to their hometowns because they have been able to be in person. And I have a feeling that maybe some of our teachers might do this as well at the end of the year if things don't change. I firmly believe that we must return and keep our schools open as long as we physically can. I understand there is risk with this decision, but there are risks every day whether we step outside of our house or not. The all-remote learning model is just posing.
Caitlin, would you mind wrapping up? It's, we try to keep it.
Absolutely, yes.
Not too long, please.
Gotcha. Our mitigation strategies have been closely followed in our district, as far as my understanding. So I felt it was important, yeah, for myself and those who agree. Thank you so much to the Board of Education members for their time, and I look forward to hearing your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wasn't trying to pick on you. I just think we want to make sure that everybody tries to keep to around three minutes when they speak. I'm going to call on, with somebody, Coley. All I see is Coley on the screen.
Yes, hi, I'm Coley Jones. My daughter is a first grader in Nat Chog. It's actually our first year in Wyndham Public Schools. She was in St. Mary's before. And I have to say, we're very impressed with Nat Chog and Principal Jones, and her teacher, Mr. Noye, is amazing. So we're very happy. I'm a nurse. I've been working through the pandemic from the start. I've probably tested most of you. I was the first one out there testing. I'm doing vaccine now. And being that close to it, I've not brought it home, and my family has not had it. So if you wear your masks and you do the mitigation strategies, you can come away from it. I mean, I'm front, I'm in people's faces that are positive, and I have not had it, and my family has not had it. My daughter really is struggling. She is new to the school and is crying every night that she has no friends because she's not there to be able to make friends. And that's heartbreaking. She's turning seven and cries every night that she has no friends. I think keeping it in the hybrid model, where you can keep the cohorts, the CDC just released today some strategies to be able to reopen, but must be able to keep that social distance, is great. They have the opportunity to go and keep the flex Wednesdays so that everybody has a day to be able to do what they need to do and catch up. You know, it's sad to me that my daughter is on all of her specials in the afternoons, and she's the only one. So I keep telling her that she gets all this special time with her special teachers, like art and theater and, you know, all, and technology, and they're amazing teachers and art. But it's sad that she's the only one that's going. So we need to get the kids engaged again and to be able to learn. So I just wanted to say, you know, I don't speak at these, I've been at all of them virtually, but I just wanted to say, like, if you wear your mask, any social distance, you can walk away without getting COVID, and I've been in it from the start. So thank you for letting me to speak. And I thank you to the superintendent for all of her hard work and for all the teachers who are doing an amazing job.
Thank you, Coley. Next, I'm going to call on Kami Nylan Poirier.
Hi, thanks.
Hi.
Let me just get my notes up. Well, thank you. I'm Kami Nylan Poirier, the president of the Wyndham Federation of Teachers. Before I get started with what I had originally planned to say tonight, I would like to offer my heartfelt condolences to the family and friends of our colleague, Mark Gildea. If you knew Mark, consider yourself lucky. Whether you knew him as coach, teacher, or friend, he made our Wyndham family better, and his passing is a tremendous loss to our community. Okay, um, now my original message for tonight. First of all, this health crisis has forced all of us to make some very difficult decisions. Whether you're a parent, a teacher, the superintendent, or a union leader. This is new territory for all of us. And everyone is doing the best they can and the best they know to make decisions that are right for their families, their students, or their coworkers. Once again, I am advocating for the safety of our members during this pandemic by asking that our return to in-person learning happen only when our community's COVID rates have consistently improved. Hopefully that will be sooner than later. We want to be back, but we want to be back in as safe an environment as possible. Dr. Youngberg and members of the board, you received our most recent letter stating our union's continued position against returning to in-person hybrid learning at this time because our community's average daily COVID rates still continue to be high. We know that the more contagious strain of COVID has been detected here in Connecticut, but without the ability to test every positive case in the state, we have no idea just how widespread it already is. The experts at the DPH continue to predict that it will be the dominant strain of the virus by March. Once again, we're all meeting from the safety of our homes. And since January 4th, our hardworking teachers and staff members have been teaching from the safety of their homes or from their empty classrooms. We are still urging that we remain in a virtual learning model until we see a consistent and significant improvement in our community's COVID rates in order to best protect our staff and students. We can't control all the aspects of our lives during this health crisis, but we can control how we interact. Our children are watching and listening and learning from us. Again, thank you to Dr. Youngberg for keeping the lines of communication open. And thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Kami. Next, I'm going to call on Amy. Is it Guile?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say first, before I start, that I've never spoken at one of these Board of Ed meetings before. And I want to give a shout out to my girls' teachers at Barrow, fifth and kindergarten. They have been amazing with the virtual learning piece. And like most people on here, I understand that there are many opinions out there regarding the return to school. I understand the fears that everybody has. Like the other parent that spoke, who was a nurse, I also work in the frontline as a probation officer dealing with our community. And virtual learning is honestly only going to be as good as the parents that are able to be home with their kids. You're putting an added strain on parents to have to accommodate having their kids go from place to place to place to place, which is not going to reduce the spread of COVID because now they're exposing many different people because parents have to work. Our girls are struggling. My K and fifth grader are struggling emotionally. They're struggling mentally. They want their friends. My kindergartner only knows half of her friends based on that computer screen. My fifth grader is struggling with having to test at home, but not being able to see her friends. Sports are virtual. She has no human contact. I think it's adding stress to kids being home, as it would if they were in the classroom safely, with masks on. At least that human touch would work. Never mind the internet issues that parents are experiencing at home, the constant on and off their computer, the not being liable. I mean, the teachers are great. They say, you know what, log in when you can. I'm not a fan, honestly, of the virtual Wednesdays or free Wednesdays, or whatever you want to call them. My fifth grader logs in for a matter of five seconds because she actually does her schoolwork and she's free for the whole entire day. My kindergartner is taught by Mrs. Guiner throughout the day. There's really no complaints there. But honestly, as a parent, as a working parent, as a parent on the frontline as well, both of us, my fiance and I, both work frontline for the state of Connecticut. We're not home with our kids. You're adding added stress to our kids and the parents, having them to have to be home. They've been home since March. Our kids have probably been in school a total of 10 to 12 days since March. We have had to accommodate that, take many days off of work. And believe me, we're not saying that, we don't want our kids, our safety put out there. Believe me, that's not what we're saying. But we do think schools should open safely, at least in a hybrid model. Other districts around us are open, Columbia, Hampton, Chaplain, Scotland. I understand our socioeconomic are different in Wyndham. We understand that. But other school districts are open. And I think if Wyndham's not going to open all the schools, they need to consider opening K through 5. Other school districts have their K through 5 schools in, and it is working. If it's not working in the middle school and it's not working in the high school, then put them at a hybrid model. Those kids are older. Those kids can be home alone. Not that it's an ideal situation to have them home alone without parents, but at least the parents are not going to have to struggle about putting a roof over their head or being able to be home with their children to accommodate the learning piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'm just going to, there are a lot of people lined up to speak, and I'm going to name them off in order so you know where you are in the line because I just got a chance to scroll through all the chat. So it, next is Ryan Garvey, then Nicole Bay, then Carol Zabablish, Karen Strube, Andy Gonzalez, Ismail, Bowleran, Adeline Price, Pedro Luna, Nicole Campanelli, Jessica Higgin, Jessica McCormick, and Christine Kettle. Okay? So if I didn't say your name, I see somebody just put their name in the list, Leslie Round. So next, we have Ryan Garvey.
Hi, thank you. So I'm in favor of going back to school. I think we need hybrid. The kids need the interaction with not just the students. They need their teachers. Teachers are vital growth for all youth. Parents can teach their kids how to behave, how to act, but when it comes to the education aspect of it, we need help. And that's why we send our kids to public school or any kind of education. There's only so much, as parents, we can teach, and we need your support and your help. And then you factor in, yes, physical health is important, but what about the mental health? I hear everyone, especially a lot of the teachers, talk about the physical health of the pandemic. But what about the mental health? Where is that aspect looked at by Wyndham Public Schools? We, we really need to look at all aspects of the teachers, the support staff, and the kids. It's vitally important to these kids. I've been working through the pandemic since it started. It, it's a toll on everyone, whether you're working in it or not. We need to find a better way to handle it. And back, I think it was in October, the superintendent sent out a survey to parents. And then I think a week later, or the, two weeks later, she came back and said, we could safely go back to school in all the schools but two, I believe. And one of them happens to be my kid's school, Charles H. Barrow's. Well, if that's the case, maybe we should start looking at that. If four of our schools can go back safely because the numbers are low enough that we can keep the social distancing and the safety of wearing masks and the change in between classrooms, or cut the change between classrooms, all the options should be looked at, or at least attempted. Like, I know another parent mentioned, maybe we just bring back the elementary school, K through 5, or K through whatever. We need to start looking at resolving and learning to deal with the situation instead of just sticking with what we've been doing since March. It's not working. Teachers, learning, learning over a computer, whether you're training as an adult, or you're training, or you're teaching kids, it's not the same. You need interaction. I have meetings with, with people at my job, and not being able to be in person, there's something lost in communication. You're constantly getting interrupted. Somebody doesn't unmute. Things are lost. We need to reevaluate.
Ryan, it's time for you to wrap up. Your three minutes are, are at an end. So is there anything you'd like to say to finish for less than 30 seconds?
I'd just like to say thank you to the superintendent. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks. And people may be questioning, I am timing people, so you know, I'm going to try to let you know when your three minutes is up. Nicole Bay is up next.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Bay, and I'm the STEM coach over at Barrow's. I'm also the parent of a child at North Wyndham School. As evidenced by our public comment tonight in both, supporting both sides of this very sensitive issue, I would be interested to see what the results of a staff survey would be. Just curious. I appreciate the stance of the union because it is their job to make sure that we have safe working conditions. However, for me, a personal decision would be to return back to school for both my child, who needs to be back in school, and for me as a teacher, who needs to see some students. I mentioned during public comment last time that my concern was for returning to school and not having staff coverage. I don't believe that issue alone should keep us out of school. But I think that maybe we have to start thinking differently in a different situation. In the case of a staff member quarantining, maybe that class could quarantine, also alleviating the coverage issue. 10 days of covering for a teacher in a quarantine situation puts a strain on the staff and removes resources and supports from other students who need them. So we have to start thinking more creatively. The high school is not able to cohort, but K through 8 is. So sending back the elementary and middle school students could work while we keep the high school students virtual. But the most important point that I'd like to make tonight is related to choice. If we go back to school, families who are not comfortable with that have the choice to stay remote. If we stay remote, the families who want their students in school have no choice. So with this very, very difficult situation that has to be made, again, going on record saying, I'm glad I'm not making it, I would like us to consider the needs of everyone and where there is an option for choice, to take that option. I don't believe that there's one solution that will fit everyone, and I know none of the options are ideal for anyone. But it's our responsibility to educate our students in a safe environment, and I believe it can be done as long as all mitigation strategies are adhered to. Thank you to the Board of Ed and to the superintendent for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Next, I have, well, Carol Zabablish said she didn't want to speak after all because her question was answered. So I'm moving on to Karen Strube, Struberg, or something like that. I scribbled.
Strube.
I'm sorry. Strube, okay.
Karen Strube, thank you. I am a teacher, third grade, at CH Barrow STEM Academy. I have spoken before, although I'm still not comfortable doing this at a Board of Ed hearing. But I did want to make a few comments. I do want to say that I don't disagree with anybody. I think there are so many circumstances that could and are being presented here because we are all human beings. We all feel things differently. I have always been a staunch supporter of returning to school 100%, full steam ahead in September. I realize now that, obviously, I don't know that that was possible back then, and I'm not sure that it is now. However, I have become more familiar with teaching online. It's been a learning curve and a learning experience, and thank goodness my students know more than I do in that regard. However, I will agree that the mental health and the connectivity that teachers and students have is being lost. We can smile and laugh and support each other online. And even though we can't really touch each other anymore, even when we're back in school, it is important that we are together and we can see each other face to face. I also agree that we have to look at all aspects. If K through 5 can open in some of the schools or all the schools in Wyndham, that has to be considered. I know that some schools have had more instances where the virus is more obvious than others. And again, that needs to be considered. I will also say that I am a fan of keeping the Wednesday flex day. As a flex day, I do think students, parents, teachers, we all need a break on that day. Even though they are required to do work, it's not new learning. And I would also say that while I appreciate the hard work and the decision-making of the board and Dr. Youngberg, I think we've got to stop flip-flopping between, we're going to be virtual this week, next week we're going to be in person, we're going to be home for three weeks, but we might come back on Wednesdays. I mean, I actually spoke to a parent today who was very confused with the options that we had with the survey that was sent out. I myself was confused. So I do think that we, ideally 100% is what we all want. I think virtually, we have to get back to and keep the flex, flex Wednesdays available for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Andy Gonzalez.
Good evening. Andy Gonzalez, proud parent of students in Wyndham Public Schools. I'm also an elementary school principal in another district that has been in-person full for months. I want to thank the board and the community for how you've honored Coach Gildea. He truly was an amazing man who led with great character and was a role model to so many at Wyndham. Thanks also to the superintendent and the Board of Education for the great care and all your decision-making during this very difficult COVID crisis. And thank you to the teachers for your efforts. I know it's a challenge. But as a parent, I see your efforts and I really appreciate it. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my girls' basketball team. Equally as important as the physical well-being is the emotional well-being of our kids. The girls would benefit from the consistency, the structure, camaraderie, the interaction with peers and coaches that our girls' basketball season would bring. The competition would give them something positive to look forward to in what has been a very challenging year. We understand the great responsibility we have to keep each other safe. We'll follow carefully all the protocols set in place by the C I A C, the E C C, and Wyndham Public Schools. So I'm respectfully asking that you allow us to play.
Thank you very much. Um, Adeline or Adeline Prince? Are you here, Adeline Prince? Oh, she wants me to skip her. Okay. Okay, so we're on to Pedro Luna.
Hello, can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right, good evening. My name is Pedro Luna. I live on Jackson Street. I have three daughters enrolled in Wyndham Public School. I understand that the current situation is a very difficult one and that there are many opinions regarding going back to the hybrid model or staying virtual. But first, I would like to thank Dr. Youngberg for including families in the process by creating that survey. I hope that the district moves forward with the plan to go hybrid and that, and to eventually increase the number of days of school, especially for elementary-age students. Not only for their education, but to increase their social interactions to improve their emotional well-being. I also hope that more is done to improve the internet and programs for online instructions. That's one thing that we're definitely struggling with some days. Nobody had mentioned it, which I found that quite surprising. But there's some times where my daughters can't even connect to their, to their meetings, whether it's Google meetings. They can't connect at all. This iBoss thing keeps on popping up on, on the laptops, and there's definitely not my internet because I actually, we had to increase our internet, so we, we have double the speed. So, and my laptop works. So definitely IT needs to be notified or something because I'm pretty sure that there's a lot of parents and, and their kids are complaining about that. But I also, many days, my children experience trouble doing their work. I can also hear other parents speaking about the issues during the Google meets. Again, I would like to repeat what I said at the last meeting. Hybrid is not effective, parents need to work, and children need to learn. Thank you, and have a good, great evening.
Thank you very much. The next person up is Nicole Campanelli.
Hi, I'm Nicole Campanelli, and I work at North Wyndham. First, I think going back hybrid and continuing with Flex Wednesdays is imperative. As stated by previous people, for many teachers, this is the only day for them to plan, provide grades, provide individual support to students, and schedule meetings without impacting students directly. To change Flex Wednesdays to alternating cohorts will lead to confusion on when a student should be in the building or not. Alternating cohorts on Wednesdays also has a large impact on caregivers finding adequate childcare for on the, on the Wednesdays that their child is not in school due to not having the same need each week. If or when we go back full in-person, teachers are still going to need to, are still going to need to provide virtual instruction for students who remain virtual. As a non-classroom teacher myself, Wednesdays are my busiest day, and it's really the only day I'm able to meet with my students who are virtual-only consistently. And secondly, we are able to say that COVID is not spreading through our schools because of the mitigation strategies such as social distancing. If the schools are not able to maintain the six-foot distancing, then I don't feel it is appropriate for us to return full-time in-person. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jessica Higam.
Hello, my name's Jessica Higam. I'm a teacher, academic coach.
I'm sorry, I'm butchering so many names.
Very common, thank you. I'm a teacher and academic coach at North Wyndham School. I'm asking to speak today because I think that Flex Wednesdays are imperative for the effective functioning of our school. If we have students in the building on Wednesdays, it will adversely affect the following things. We have all of our scheduled PPTs already in place on Wednesdays. It's a very busy day in our building. If teachers are being asked to be pulled out of their classrooms, another adult member of our building will have to cover that classroom on a Wednesday, which puts strain and pulls people away from their other role in our building, teaching students in intervention, or T-Saw, or special education, if we actually had to pull those folks as well. We have staff meetings on Wednesdays. We have fully virtual students either test with us one-on-one on Wednesdays, or we have them come into the building if that's the best-case scenario, especially for our children with IEPs. Teachers have tons of planning and preparation that they need to do on those days. We have teacher collaboration time. We have training for teachers. We have the dual-language program in our building, which is a specialized program within the district. And this, Wednesdays offer an opportunity for the coaching model to happen with those teachers, especially the new teachers to the district. It gives teachers on Wednesdays an opportunity to support those struggling learners that are at home full-time. And Wednesdays, when we started, were for a thorough cleaning of our building between the cohorts and ensuring that we had a safe environment for our students. I have heard some parents and staff members talk about surrounding towns that have had students all-in for some period of time, even as early as September. I think when you consider the surrounding towns, you have to consider that you're looking at apples and oranges. The student-to-square-footage ratio in surrounding towns is very different. If you look at the next town over in Mansfield, they're in the process of consolidating three elementary schools into one right now because they can't even get funding to do repairs on their buildings because there are so few students in their building. So they're able to keep their students six feet apart and safely distanced while they're in the building, K through five, because they have the square footage to allow for it. We do not have that luxury at North Wyndham School. So I really hope that the board and the superintendent, and I know you guys are doing really hard work, and I really appreciate and value everything that you're doing, consider leaving Flex Wednesdays in our schedule to ensure the effective functioning of our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica McCormick.
Hi, my name is Jessica McCormick, and I'm a first-grade teacher over at North Wyndham School. And I just want to let you know that I really appreciate everything that you guys are doing, and I know that it does take a lot to be able to figure out what the best plan is. But in my opinion, I would really appreciate keeping the Flex Wednesdays as they are. I use it for my small groups and my one-on-one students that I pre-plan with parents, and I also use it as a trade-in social time. So my students come and we have a set time for virtual lunch or virtual recess. So my students are getting that whole class or even a small group interaction because some students say it's too loud, so I have separate recesses or lunches based on the need. So I use my Flex Wednesdays so that my kids can get the social interaction while being at a safe distance. I also use it to make sure that my students who need help on their seesaw assignments are getting help because I stay online with virtual office hours. And actually, today, I have not gone off the computer since 8:30 this morning because I've been back-to-back with helping students and talking with parents and doing everything. So my Wednesdays are very important, and I just hope you take that into consideration going forward. And I just want to thank you for everything and letting me speak today.
Thank you, thank you. It's important to hear all these perspectives. And as elected officials, the Board of Education really counts on hearing from folks. It helps us be better informed. Next, we have, we have one, two, three, four, five more people. Christina Kettle is next.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak and allowing us to share our opinions. I wasn't originally going to speak, I was just going to sit and listen in, but I felt I needed to put my two cents in. So again, thank you. And I have three children that attend the Barrows STEM Academy. And as a parent who initially kept them all virtual due to their safety, and I wanted to keep them safe, I found that they were starting to fall behind, and they were not mentally enjoying being home all the time with mom and their siblings. And so I recently sent them back in December, and I'm hoping for their mental health and for their learning that we actually go back in-person, at least for hybrid, if not full. I don't know about anybody else, but it was a hard decision for me to keep them home, and it was a hard decision for me to send them back. The teachers are amazing, the staff is amazing, the safety protocols, I've had no issues with any of that. But I just wanted to, to share that from my point of view because I was one of those who said, I'm just going to keep them home. I do agree with the Wednesdays being like a catch-up day or check-in day. It, it's, it does help having them home now, again, fully virtual. They are starting to fall behind again. They're not engaging in class as they should be or completing assignments because they know they can get to them later. And I don't know about anybody else, but my kids before this, we had zero screen time. And for them to sit in front of a screen for six to eight hours a day, this is, it's not new now, but it's a new thing for them. And I just, I don't think it's good for them mentally or physically. And someone else had already mentioned about if you needed to quarantine a class or a grade level. In a previous district, I have seen where that did work, where the teacher was able to quarantine and teach the class at the same time. So they didn't have to bring in anybody else. Everybody was in the comfort of their own home, safety at home. The kids were at home, and the teacher. So there was no other resources being used. I just, again, thank you for letting me speak, and I appreciate all the work that everybody has been doing. And keep up. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. And we aren't letting you speak, Christina. That is your right to speak to us during public comments, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Leslie Round, is it?
Yes, hi, I teach seventh and eighth grade, Esau, at the middle school. And I want to say that there's no right or wrong side of this. I also think that children and teachers are better served being in the school. I also have two teenagers who have been virtually learning since March. And I would love it if my daughter could attend classes in person. Now, she started as a senior in high school, now she's a freshman at Eastern, everything's virtual. My son's spending his senior year virtual. So I really respect both sides of this. My paramount concern, because there's so much different information out there from different sources, is what is true. And there's a lot that's not known, but my number one concern, because it is definitely best for the, the students to be in a classroom, but my number one concern that supersedes that is the children and teachers' safety, I believe, are paramount. And if we have to look, somebody suggested maybe different schools instead of making the whole district virtual. I'm just putting different ideas out there because as difficult as this has been emotionally, educationally, socially for the students, I still say safety supersedes that, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joanne Hadad, did you want to speak? I think I saw your name in the chat.
Yes, yes, Lynn, thank you, I would. There's just two quick things I'd like to address, neither of which actually is regarding my personal opinion about the learning models. As a product of one staunch Democratic father and one staunch Republican mother, with their goal of teaching me to know both sides to every issue, I often might find myself struggling to get on one side of the fence or the other as I'm empathetic to both sides. That brings me to the first of the two things I want to talk about. No matter what the decisions are, and I say decisions because they are likely going to change several more times until the last day of school, I would ask that all community members support the decision-makers, specifically our superintendent. She is in a no-win situation for sure. Just as Leslie said, there is no right answer either way. There are positives and deltas to both sides. She has to consider, however, Board of Education, Governor, and Commissioner advisements and opinions, yet she chooses to consider staff, parents, and community feelings as well. All the while, she maintains a very transparent philosophy. I could not be more grateful, and I know most of the staff members in the district feel the same way. I'm sure most don't realize the level of frustration and anger that comes following several of these decisions. And they can often get directed at one person. We see it as administrators, as we watch our superintendent, also struggle at times socially and emotionally. We support our students, we support our staff, and I'm hoping that those who work with Dr. Youngberg and community members will continue to pick up supporting our central office members to do the same for them as well, because these decisions are not done easily, they're done with struggle. My second point, and so, so important, I want parents to know, please, because I want you to get a good night's sleep. I want you to know that the emotional well-being of your students is at the forefront of every class, every day, whether we're virtual or hybrid. Academics believe it, unfortunately, is secondary. And it's going to be compromised this year, no matter what learning model we're in. But we're not alone, it is everyone, okay? So please know, though, that we are, we are working so hard to take care of your children emotionally along with you. It continues to be the triangle. Parents, teachers, and students, we work together. So again, as a community, please, let's stick together, no matter what the decisions are, because no one is the right answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody needs to mute who has their iPhone on, who says their name is Lynn. Thank you. It wasn't me, the name spelled the same way. And next, we have Christina Conde. Christina? Okay, I don't hear her. How about, the last person I have signed up is Kathleen Brillon?
Hi, that's me. You can make me fancy. My name is Kathleen.
In middle school, we took French, you know, that was the.
My, my name is Kathleen Brillon. I am the art teacher at Wyndham Middle School. I wasn't planning on speaking, I was planning on just listening in tonight. But I, I just want everyone to understand that it's hybrid, I get it. I love seeing the kids. I'd give anything to be in my art room again instead of a cart. And I love seeing them, but it's so hard to try and keep running back and forth. I mean, I am, number one, I'm a teacher, I've been doing this 26 years. And I, I have this habit of wanting to go over to them, especially doing something like art. And I, and I have to keep bringing myself back. But it's so hard when I have 15 kids on the computer and eight in the room with me, and I feel like I'm torn. I feel like I'm not helping one group like I could. You know, it's either I'm dealing with internet issues or computer issues, and then there's kids in the room in front of me that I feel like I'm torn. But when I'm all virtual, I can help all of them. I can check in with each and every kid, we can laugh, we can have them hold up their work. I, it's, and I guess I just felt like I needed to say that because I don't think everyone understands that school isn't like it was pre-pandemic. Do the kids get to talk to one another at lunch? Yeah, you know, I have lunch duty where there's all of them in there with the masks. So I, I get it, they do get that social aspect, and I know it. And being an art teacher, I know my, I'm lucky that my subject matter lends itself to being social. Like, we talk to each other, I do Joke Friday, and we, like, while we're doing our work, we do, like, we do jokes and stuff. And I try and make it fun for them because I know it's not easy. And hats off to the parents. I really can't imagine the juggling act that you all have to do. I, I don't even. I, I, I don't even have kids, I don't have kids of my own. Your kids are my kids, you know? So I will always refer to them as that as well. So I guess, like I said, I, I would give anything to be back in my room and with the kids, but I feel like I can't give it my all if I feel like I'm torn between the kids that are standing and sitting in front of me and the ones on the computer. I feel like I'm, I'm just a chicken with my head cut off running around, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for any, all of you who have to make these tough decisions, because I don't know if I could do it. I appreciate it.
Thank you for all the parents and the, and the staff and teachers who spoke today. There were very, very many good points raised. I, I just see in the, in the chat that Christina Conde, or whoever she pronounces her name, said that her microphone is not working, so she couldn't chime in, but I just want to read what she wrote, not all, but the teachers have the same class size, so in a class with a large number of students maintaining a six foot, six feet apart will not be possible. So I just want to get that into the public comment for Christina. Thank you. And with that, we've wrapped up the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. For people who, who want to stick around later on, um, we're not, we're going to have public comment before we go into non-meetings at the end of the meeting around a contract issue, and you're welcome to speak then. So, the next item on the agenda is approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes for January 6th, 2021. I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion made by Mark.
Seconded by Ilda.
Seconded by Ilda. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Janet, please.
Ms. Ide.
Hi.
Dr. Galucci.
Hi.
Dr. Gomez.
Abstaining, I was in present.
Dr. Caban Owen.
I have to abstain, I was sick.
Mr. Doyle, can I get a thumbs up? We're not hearing you.
Did you vote on the minutes, Mark?
Yes, I voted aye.
Yeah, he said he voted already. She's still on leave.
Ms. Haney.
Hi.
Ms. Lambert.
Hi.
Ms. Ray.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're on to, uh, to superintendent's report, and today we're focusing on, uh, the COVID-19 update and the school reopen, reopening recommendation. Um, and just for people who, who are wondering about the rest of the agenda, in case you don't have it in front of you, um, there's a discussion item on the agenda today around winter sports, committee reports, and then some action items, which include action on winter sports potentially. So, uh, we're handing it over to you, Dr. Youngberg.
Thank you. Let me share my screen here. One second. Okay, hopefully everybody can see my screen. So the objectives for tonight's presentation are for me to give an update on COVID-19 and how it's impacted the district, um, make my recommendations, as I've already shared, I am recommending we return in the hybrid model on Monday, February 1st, as well as provide some details about future plans to replace the hybrid model with a family choice of either fully virtual or fully in-person learning. I'm also going to give, uh, the Board of Ed an update on winter sports, uh, Food Service Department and our elementary school consolidation planning, so there is much going on. I'm going to start off, uh, just reading a brief letter, I know you probably can't see it, because the type is very small, I'm going to read it to you. I think the public comment makes it clear, we're sort of a house divided, and it's absolutely true that there are no right or wrong answers. Everybody comes with the, with the same feelings of wanting to make sure that their own safety and the safety of the people they love is protected. So everything's coming from that place, we just have to figure out how to navigate through it. Tonight, I plan to share the latest information from the Center for Disease Control, Connecticut State Departments of Public Health and Education, Governor Lamont's COVID Task Force, the North Central District Health Department, and our own family and staff survey, uh, data. I believe the information that I'll share will support our ability to safely reopen our schools in the hybrid model on Monday, February 1st, while continuing to plan for a future transition that finally replaces the hybrid model with the family choice of either fully in-person or fully virtual learning. I want to assure everyone that I completely understand both sides of the reopening debate and the seriousness of the topic being discussed. I understand these things as both an educational leader and as a mom, and I desperately want to ensure that our students, our staff members, and all of their extended family members remain safe and healthy. Wyndham as a community has been hit hard by the virus, posting some of the highest community case rate numbers in the state for an extended period of time. While community case rate numbers are frightening and definitely drive the number of potential cases the school system has to deal with every day, the numbers are not indicative of transmission of the virus in our schools. Schools in Wyndham and across the state and country have minimized the transmission of the virus. The public health experts believe that this is the result of adherence to multiple mitigation strategies, such as masking, frequent hand washing, social distancing, cohorting, the elimination of large group gatherings, and cleaning and disinfecting protocols. Given my understanding of this information and my deep concern over our district struggles with student attendance, student engagement, and work completion, I believe reopening schools in person is necessary at this time. Our daily tracking of district COVID data and our ongoing communication with state and local public health experts provides ample time to readjust this decision, should there be a change in the future that jeopardizes anyone's safety. Whether you agree with my recommendations to reopen schools or not, I believe we all understand the need to pull together in support of Wyndham students. I thank you in advance for listening this evening with an open mind and maintaining a respectful dialogue that would be worthy of our students watching. We are all going to get through this together. So we're just going to start off by saying that I understand that there are many opinions, polar, you know, both sides of the story and everyone in between, and your, our survey data that I'm going to share is going to show you that as well. But I am coming from a public health perspective, and I'm sharing information from the public health experts, because this is a public health crisis. And again, as I told my leadership team, I've been through a lot of school, have taken a lot of courses, not a single one of them has had anything to do with public health. So I'm just putting it out there, not one course, so we're doing the best we can. I want to start off by telling you that I'm going to be giving you, uh, giving the staff three links, I'm going to push them out, I can push them out to our families on our website as well. Three of the latest publications that have come out from the Center for Disease Control, you can look this one up, this is New York Times article, and there's a quote you can read on the screen. Basically, what the CDC is saying is now, after having more than six months, it's been just about six months since we opened schools, but remember, this pandemic's been going on since March, they have all sorts of data now to suggest that schools across the country are not transmitting the virus, because we are doing a great job of following multiple mitigation strategies. We have data now, there are scientists, they're doing little mini experiments, and the experiments are showing that we're not transmitting the virus. I am not going to argue that Wyndham hasn't, has, doesn't have incredibly high community rate numbers, that is a fact. But if it's not being transmitted in schools, we can give the reopening of schools a try and watch it carefully to make sure everyone's safe. Two more links, again, pushed out from the CDC. The first one is a quote, uh, from an article where they, or from a research project they did out in Wisconsin. It is, um, rural Wisconsin, very different than, than the neighborhood we live in, but that, a lot of the data that they're sharing, the size of the district and the things like that are very similar to Wyndham. So again, I would, I would encourage you to read, and I'll push these out, so everyone has an opportunity to do that. The bottom link is another study that they've conducted in North Carolina, same thing, the studies are showing the same thing all over the country, and it's what we have figured out here in our, with our own data. We are dealing with a number of positive cases every single day, but we're not seeing the transmission of the virus in the building. We're, we're quarantining people when we think they might be close contacts, and they're not coming back sick. The data's just not suggesting that we're moving the, the virus in the buildings. I don't want the data to suggest that. That is really what's happening, though. It's, the data is real, and I know my school nurses are on here, there's a lot of you on here, we may be asking them to jump in, but they're involved in analyzing the data every single day. From the State Department of Ed, there's, uh, six things that they want everyone to be aware of, that they are working hard to, um, help our schools, uh, stay open safely. They have opened up sites all over the, I know it may be hard to, to see, again, it's a, it's a picture of a picture, so, um, they are opening up sites across the state for, uh, school staff members to be tested, to have priority access to testing if they'd like. Uh, they are still suggesting that schools consider take, taking on this Bionex Now COVID testing. I, we've had debates with my COVID team about this, the testing is only available to students and staff members who are symptomatic. We keep sending the message that we, home, that we don't want staff or students in the building if they're experiencing symptoms, we want them to stay home if they're not feeling well. So to me, it's a little bit of a, it sends a mixed message to set up testing for symptomatic folks, if you're telling symptomatic folks they shouldn't be there, so we're, but we're still talking about whether that's going to benefit us in any way. I'm going to update you on the vaccines, uh, in, in a couple slides from now, um, but we are waiting on the vaccine. They have made a decision not to vaccinate teachers, because when they analyze the data, that is not a group that is traditionally getting very sick and/or, and/or having, um, the kinds of reactions that put them in the hospital, or in some cases for the 75 years or older group actually dying from the virus, so that they've made a decision based on the data. That's not us, that's the public health experts who are analyzing the state's data. Uh, the state is offering help with contact tracing. My school nurses know I was joking about this today, um, we're not receiving any help on contact tracing, my COVID warriors are doing it all by themselves, but they are offering it. Uh, they, we do have a weekly meeting with the State Department of Ed and the Department of Public Health, um, that is when we get to hear from Dr. Carter and Dr. Sosa, they are the number one and two epidemiologists in the state, as well as a number of folks who support the Department of Public Health, um, so that's ongoing every week, and they continue to support us in providing guidance. They continue to, to tell superintendents that it is safe to reopen schools. They, you know, obviously we have the ability to make that decision at, at the local level, but they continue to support the reopening of schools. This is our latest data as of 3:15 this afternoon. I want to remind everyone that we have not been in school, uh, in person since December 22nd. So there are still a number of people who are in quarantine or isolation, it's not because of school, because we have not been in person. Uh, so on the, on the screen, you'll see the number of students and staff members who are in quarantine or isolation. Uh, you also see the total number of positive cases the district has, has worked through us since September, uh, with 59 positive cases amongst our staff members, about 8.3% and 250 of, of our students, about 7.6%. Again, just like the last, uh, few updates for COVID, Wyndham is no longer at the top of the barrel, but we still have fairly high community case rate numbers. You'll notice on the screen that not a single district on the screen with case numbers higher or around our case rate are asking to remain virtual. Every one of them is either in-person, hybrid, or moving to hybrid. I had a five o'clock call with the governor's COVID task force, some of the information that was shared is here, summarized on the screen. They have, are talking, spending a great deal talking about the UK variant, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that in the slide or two, and the South African variant, which has not yet been proven to be in our country. They believe that both the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines work on these variants. They're doing some sample, I, some kind of sample test to, to verify that. But they both believe that the vaccines work for all the variants of the virus so far. They are rolling out the vaccines at the state level using an equity lens, and the state's focus for vaccination is to reduce deaths and severe illness, which is why they have asked the teachers to hold off, and they've started with the 75-year, years of age and older, and then the 65 to 74-year-olds, and then they will get to the school staff. Again, they've analyzed their public health data. Uh, and by the way, any staff members of ours who fall within those age groups will be, will have their, uh, their names uploaded into VAMs and will be eligible for the vaccine, um, as the state tells us that's happening. They, uh, again, impressed upon us the fact that mitigation strategies are, are, continue to be necessary, and they also believe that the multiple mitigation strategies that exist in schools and other workplaces will be effective to fight the variants. So even though the, the variant sounds very scary, it does not sound like we need to do anything different to beat it. Uh, Connecticut right now is proud to say they are number three in the country for the highest percent of vaccines already administered, at least one dose, so that's good news. And the governor has extended all of his emergency powers, um, through April 20th of 2021. So the state still believes that we are, you know, within this emergency window, and so they're moving forward with that until April. At our Tuesday morning call, uh, the following information was shared, so I'm just summarizing it all for you. Dr. Carter is the chief epidemiologist for the state of Connecticut, he works out of Yale's, uh, laboratories, his, this is something he's actually said multiple times in the meetings, "Schools should be first to reopen and last to close," he said it again on Tuesday. Um, statewide, we are past the increased holiday transmission window, that bubble of cases they anticipated us having after all the holiday gatherings. As the state, as a state, we are past that, they're watching the numbers come down. They continue, um, to state that schools are not transmitting the virus, and they believe that's due to the multiple mitigation strategies being enforced. They did bring up the UK variant, um, he said that people in UK don't like that we call it the UK variant, so the scientific, uh, name for it is the B117 strain. They have confirmed that there are eight cases in the state, they actually admitted that there, they believe there's a lot more than eight. The way they were trying to explain it to us, um, it's a, it's a highly contagious virus, I guess it's smarter than, uh, the first COVID virus, in that it's able to attach itself to, uh, the proteins, they were trying to explain in scientific terms, but, um, what they were letting us know is when that we do a COVID test, the initial test that we do right now, red flags those, that virus, to tell it whether or not it could possibly be this variant, but we only have two labs in the state of Connecticut that actually confirm the variant. So they, they know whether or not it's in the red flag zone, and if it has to be tested, but they don't have the opportunity to test as many samples as they'd like, that's why he believes there's far more than eight cases already in the state. Uh, but again, he reinforced the idea that mitigation strategies and the vaccine are both going to be effective against this variant. He did mention something, and I, I, when I got off the call, I actually went and I found Mr. Weathers to tell him, I was very concerned, because he did mention, the first time, in the first time since probably early June, DPH referenced the potential for a state-recommended shutdown in the future, and he used March as a potential gauge, if the US follows the path of the UK. So obviously, there's no way of knowing that, um, but it, it did, it did concern me, which is why it's in red, because the DPH has not been suggesting anything remotely like a state shutdown. Uh, but he said that they're watching it carefully, they're tracking our, our case rate numbers closely, um, but right now, we're in good shape, our numbers are down, and he felt like it was safe. They feel like we're in a good place, but again, they want us to be aware that there could potentially be something coming in the future. And in terms of our, our district, because we monitor the data every single day, sometimes multiple times a day, if this, something like this were to happen, we would have the ability to make a change in the decision. It's not like a decision to reopen means we can't close down a grade level, or a classroom, or a mini team, or a school, or the district, I mean, we've done that already. So I feel like we need to at least try to get back to school in person and, and carefully monitor the situation from there. In terms of DPH and our North Central District Health Department, um, the timeline, oh, I hear somebody. The, the timeline for, uh, school staff to get their vaccine, their vaccines, their first dose is somewhere around late February or early March. They did say that, that we just need to be patient. Um, they, they can't guarantee that that's the timeline, but that's what they're shooting for right now. They are hoping that the Biden administration kicks up the production of vaccines and could potentially make that earlier, but no one actually knows. So they just keep mentioning for, the fact that we need to be patient, um, and that they are coming. We did hear from our North Central District Health Department. Um, we did hear from our North Central District Health Department that when the vaccine is available, Wyndham Schools will be the first district in our local health district to get the vaccination, because our district has the highest community case rate numbers uh than the others that are that are with us in the in the strangely configured group that is us. Uh, by Friday, two-thirds of the Wyndham Public Schools nursing department will have had their second dose of vaccine, which is great news, because the school nurses are going to give our uh staff members their vaccinations when they're available. And they also let us know that there are some updates on cleaning and disinfecting that are coming out. Um, they basically suggest, obviously, cleaning and disinfecting is extremely important, and we're not gonna stop doing that. But they did suggest that they have some information now that transmission on surfaces is uh less likely to happen than they might have believed in originally. Figure now they have many, many months of data to analyze. So they are learning things and making adjustments accordingly. I know sometimes it's hard to make you know, mid-course corrections, but that's what scientists do all the time. I, you know, that's what happens. You go with a hypo- a hypothesis. It doesn't work. You go to the next, that's what they're doing all along, and they are changing the rules, and it can be frustrating when that happens, but that's why it's happening. On the screen is the district attendance data um compared to last year, because we're always tracking to see how we're doing. Uh, the week of January eighteenth in twenty twenty had an attendance average of ninety-two point two-eight. And a year later in twenty twenty-one, the attendance average is eighty-four point eighty-three, and I know that the two years are nothing alike. Um, but we still have to keep track of our students, and that means that two hundred and forty-two fewer students were in attendance this year than last year. And to put that in perspective, Sweeney School has two hundred and forty-eight students enrolled. So an entire school of students, we can't account for them. That is just not, it's not acceptable, which is why I believe we need to open the doors and get back to school and see if we can reconnect with the with the students who are not showing up. Remember, showing up is one problem. We also have students that are showing up. Their faces are on the screen, but they're not completing work. They're not turning in any uh any of their assignments or uh many of their assignments in in the last week or so, I've had the uh the opportunity to observe, or I call it virtually stalk my administrators for their observations, and every single school just about every single school, one of the items on their agenda was, what do we do for the kids that are not showing up? What do we do for the kids that are not completing their assignments? How do we help them? How do we connect with them? It's a very real problem, and our attendance data is evidence of that. I took the last three weeks. They all were fully virtual. You can see on the top chart there, the first week. Um, approximately two hundred and eighty-nine fewer students showed up from the previous year, then we got a little better, two hundred and seventy-seven. And then we went down to the two hundred and forty-two we already talked about. It's entirely too many students that we can't account for. It's not okay, and um, it it doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna get all those kids back if we open the doors, but I think it would help. It'll help give us an opportunity. I think a lot of our kids are really struggling not to be connected um on a personal level outside of a screen. I also put on the screen there for you a comparison of all of the schools of the same week. In both years, in both twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. You can see, there's a couple of schools that have managed to keep their attendance close to where it was before. Kudos to them for working hard at that. I know it's not easy, but there's some pretty significant drop-offs for several of our other schools. And then, as I already mentioned, work completion is a district issue. Every every one of our schools knows that there's a major issue with kids completing assignments and feeling like they can get the work done, or they wanna get the work done. I'm seeing it in my, with my own children at home. It's just not motivating um to connect with someone on a screen as it is when your teacher is with you and tells you that he or she wants you to do something. It's very different. Teachers don't realize the kind of power they have. They really do have power and influence. Okay, moving on to our survey data. We had four hundred and fourteen staff members respond to the survey, which represents about fifty-eight percent of the staff. I didn't give a whole lot of time to turn the survey around. I know that if I'd given more days, I probably would have increased our participation rate for both the the staff and the families, but you can see the breakdown predominantly certified staff answering, and you can see from the schools. When when they were asked the question of which of the three scenarios they would like, uh, staff members, oh, someone's writing on the screen. I still don't understand how that happens, but I know it's happened several times before. Um, the staff members, uh, looked seventy-six point six of them chose scenario one. Scenario one is keeping virtual Wednesdays intact the way they are. The full asynchronous day. Um, I know I heard lots of public comment about the alternating Wednesdays, and the idea of offering the alternating Wednesdays was an opportunity for us initially, I thought, to move um to add an additional day for our kids in person. Um, when I put it out there in in my initial email to the staff, I got a whole lot of feedback telling me to reconsider the alternating uh days and that it might be confusing, and I also got feedback from community members saying the same thing, which is why I didn't include alternating Wednesdays at all in these three options. There is either uh the full day of virtual learning, of virtual learning. There is a a reduced day of virtual learning every day of the week. Scenario two is every day of the week is minus an hour, and scenario three is a half day on Wednesdays. So in this case, the staff chose predominantly scenario one. I'm gonna show you some comments. I don't know how to get rid of this line on the screen. I'm assuming you all can see the line. I don't even know how it got there, but see, one of the joys of virtual learning is right there. You cannot control what's actually happening. Um, I'm gonna show you some comments of staff members in favor of in-person learning. And I'm just gonna pop them up on the screen so you can read them. These are your own, these are your own our own staff members supporting bringing kids back to school, some of which you heard tonight. I put the second one in, you know, sort of a little love for the superintendent never hurt, right? I'll just give you a second to read some of the the staff uh comments about coming back to school, and again, public comment, I think, shared that as well. Give you another second or two to read, and then we'll move on.
Dr. Youngblood, may I ask a question? This is Tracy Lambert.
Sure.
Are we seeing a difference in participation between the elementaries and I don't know about the middle, but the high school? Are we getting more participation at the high school level than we are at the elementaries online? Um, because I know that's been the hardest group to be able to maintain. They don't cohort well because of different classes and stuff like that. So I'm curious if the high school is able to do online better, if we could consider maybe just sending the elementaries back for now and allowing the high school or not. I'm just looking for data, that's all.
So we, I have already made a distinction between pre-K to eight and the high school, and you'll see in my presentation, I am um not making a formal decision on, I want the high school to come back in hybrid, but after that, I'm not making a formal decision until we gather more data. Um, because they can't cohort. They have a a different set of circumstances and one less major mitigation strategy. Um, the attendance data is, I I don't know, Neil, if you could pull up the attendance data. I know that the high school the attendance data is not fabulous, um, and you can't be engaged if you're not showing up, so I don't know. I'll give Neil a chance to pull it up, so he can answer the question specifically with data. They're working hard at the attendance and the engagement piece.
I appreciate you asking.
Oh, somebody's unmuted. Okay, so this next
Candace Watts, please mute. Thank you.
These are comments in favor of virtual learning from our staff members. It's a long one. I'll give you some, a chance to read through the comments. And again, during public comment, you heard a lot of similar comments. I'm exercising my weight time. All right, in terms of the staff surveys, we had thirteen hundred ninety-three uh responses, which is about forty-three percent of our thirty-two hundred or so students. You can see the breakdown of the schools and the grade levels. Again, I didn't give a whole lot of time, but I wanted to have some information to share from the community. Uh, when we asked the parents, what was their child's current learning model? Obviously, the whole district's in virtual, but prior to going to virtual, they had a distinction. They were either hybrid or fully virtual. So the people who responded to the survey, about fifty-five, almost fifty-six percent of them were our hybrid learners, and forty-four percent were their fully virtual learners. We then asked them if they had to make a decision between March first and April ninth, if we were able to move to at least a four-day full-in-person um schooling experience, what would they choose? And it looks like about ten percent would choose, ten percent more would choose to send their kids in person, which equates to about a hundred and thirty additional students, hundred and forty additional students to be spread out over all the schools that responded in the survey. Each school is gonna
Messing with this.
Um, did someone ask a question?
No.
I don't know.
Each school is gonna need to go through um their specific data and connect with each of their families to determine what would be the decision that they would make if they were given that choice. Um, to see what that means, because it does have an impact on on what our classrooms would look like. In this case, about a hundred and thirty or so students would be added to our in-person instruction, again, spread out over our seven schools. Because the high school had, well, eight schools, I suppose, it could have also been included in this data. Again, I asked the families uh which of the three scenarios related to uh virtual Wednesdays they would choose. Fifty-five percent of those who responded chose scenario one. So, and then it looks like scenario two with a close second of twenty-eight percent, but the majority of the people who responded to the survey chose scenario one. And then here are some comments in favor of in-person learning from our families. And I'll put them up there for you to read, some of which you heard again tonight during public comment. And these are the comments in for, in favor of virtual learning from our families. So there's two very distinct feelings about this, and then everyone in between. Um, which is why it makes for a difficult decision. Um, but again, I'm deferring to the public health experts in making my recommendation to reopen. Okay, so what I'm recommending is that on Monday, February first, we return in the cohort uh in the hybrid model with cohort A students returning to school. Uh, and then obviously, we do the rotation cohort A, cohort B, flex Wednesdays. I'm gonna be providing a weekly update. Uh, again, and uh the weekly update will focus on, and you'll see it in just a second, things like our vaccine progress, you know, any updates. Uh, updates about the UK variant, about staffing concerns, anything like that. I'm gonna start providing both the staff members and the community a weekly update so that everyone feels as safe as possible. Um, my recommendation is we keep February as close to the way we've run the hybrid model as possible. Uh, and we wait to see what's happening while listening to the Department of Public Health and all while trying to plan for a potential return to full-in-person learning, obviously with the Department of Public Health support for our pre-K and grade six through eight students. The high school, we're still working on what that might look like. Um, given again that they cannot cohort, because they have individual schedules and they're not able to uh to be in classrooms or mini teams. It just, it doesn't work for them. So more to come on the high school, but I want all of our schools to come back uh in the hybrid model on Monday, February first. Some of the people have asked, why do we need these Wednesdays? And you heard in public comment um a defense of the Wednesdays. There's one thing I want the community to know that they may not completely understand. Um, and that is that we didn't hire specific teachers or designate specific staff members to teach the virtual learners. Our classroom teachers are doing double duty, and you heard some of that in their comments. Uh, unfortunately, Wyndham doesn't have the kind of budgets that many other school districts have, so we weren't able to make a distinction and have a separate virtual team and a separate in-person team, not a luxury we 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 have here. Uh, so Wednesdays, as you heard in the public comment, is really a day that they've been using for additional planning time to balance the fact that they're supporting both groups, uh which is why I I want to leave the Wednesdays intact. Uh, based on the survey data, as I've already shared, uh scenario one, looks like it works best from those who responded. I do recognize that we didn't get a great response, um, but a fair number of people look like the, look, look to uh support scenario one. I also have heard from some students who told me that they enjoy Wednesdays. I know from my own children, they enjoy Wednesdays, because if they work really hard and get their work done, they don't have that accountability. It's like one day they get to breathe. If they work hard, because if they don't, then they have to meet with their teachers and do all that stuff, but um, I I I have heard from students here in Wyndham and outside of the district about the benefits of having a flex day. So for those reasons, I want to maintain the Wednesday flex day. So finally, just in summary, I am recommending we reopen in the hybrid model on Monday, the second, I'm sorry, on Monday, February first, the second month, um, and we maintain the flex Wednesdays. I'm gonna continue to gather family data on, or the schools will on the whether or not families would choose fully virtual or fully in-person, should we be able to safely eliminate the hybrid model. It is my goal to eliminate the hybrid model and get kids back to school at least four days a week in person, pre-K to eight, and the high school will to be determined still. Um, I'm gonna provide a weekly update as I shared. Um, when there are staffing constraints that impact the district, I am, as many people suggested, planning on isolating the issue by classroom, by grade level, by mini team, or by school uh with the goal of keeping the district open for as long as we possibly can. We're gonna continue to require the principals to report out on staffing. They do that every day. They literally send me an email um that tells me exactly who's absent for the day, exactly how many bodies they have in the building to cover. Um, and and we go from there to determine what is the, what's the impact to their school? Can they safely offer in-person schooling? And we make adjustments from there. Uh, I will continue to participate in all the daily and weekly communications with the local and state public health experts. We have a COVID dashboard now. You can find the information on our website anytime. We'll continue to update that and push out that information. I stopped making those phone calls. People kept saying that they could hear the stress in my voice, and it's true. It's stressful to have to tell people there are positive cases all over the place. We're now giving you the information. We're just delivering it in a different way. Uh, we'll continue to focus on the wellness zone, um, and obviously, um be committed to closing down in the event there are internal COVID data changes. If we notice something doesn't look right and people are getting sick, we're not gonna keep the buildings open. We're just not gonna do that, but right now, that's not what the data is saying. Our internal data is not showing we're transmitting the virus in our buildings. Any questions about reopening schools before we get to the other pieces?
Anybody, questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Mary?
This is, yeah, yes, um, uh, thank you so much. Um, and also, thank you to everyone from the public who made comments, and um, you know, it's very helpful to hear everything. Um, and also, I wanna commend the um, the nurses and frontline workers throughout the state. Of course, the teachers, the administration, and the staff of the schools, because the the uh tasks and the challenges we're confronted with are so enormous and sometimes overwhelming. Um, but uh, having said that, I I have a few comments about um what I've heard. Um, one is regarding quarantining a class if a teacher or somebody is positive. I I just wanna say, my one concern is if somebody, uh, you know, especially the teacher, obviously, uh, does need to quarantine, perhaps they are not um able to teach their class because they're ill, so um, I know there is the difference between those who are exposed and and have uh a positive test and perhaps aren't ill, but I I just do wanna say that that sounds like a good idea, but may be a very difficult thing for a person who's ill to do.
Mary, completely, completely agree with you and want you to know that we've had multiple times where teachers have been quarantined, and the very first question that we ask is well, and actually, a lot, most of the time, the teachers have said, can I teach from home? That's their question. Can I teach while I'm in quarantine? And the answer is always, yes, you can, if you're feeling well enough to do so. So I completely understand what you're saying. You don't want you don't feel well.
Um, I I I thought that was the case, but I I just, you know, wanted to voice that. Also, um, you know, choice at, in this time, um, is a luxury. Um, I I agree that parents you know, would like to have choices about hybrid in person and all of that, but I do feel that But I do feel that teachers should, and staff should have the choice as well. If it's, I mean, as I said, this is a luxury. But in some workplaces, including universities, if a teacher, they may want to teach virtually, and you know, I realize Wyndham is never funded enough for that to be an option. But I think if we're going to talk about choice, we have to keep in mind that it is not just, you know, from the point of view of the students and the parents. But you know, a teacher may feel safer by being able to teach fully virtually. And those are conversations that could be had. You know, science is not a matter of opinion. So even though it's very important to hear all of the discussions, including things from the state, we don't have all the science now. And I'm very happy that Dr. Youngberg is constantly looking at the numbers in the state. But there are some things none of us know yet. For example, it would be really great to know if the, I know the town tests wastewater. Could they possibly target it to schools for a period? That would be some sort of wonderful scientific data to get. Because, you know, I'm not sure what's going on in the schools because we don't test everybody. So at some workplaces, there's, everyone is tested before they are in-person, and then they're randomly tested each week, such as where I work. So that would be wonderful in the schools, and I would feel a lot more confident about this idea about the transmission in schools if I had a little more of those numbers. But having made my comment, and thank you for listening, I appreciate the idea of trying to do hybrid, perhaps in the lower grades first. I mean, we're all trying our best to work in this situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. I just wanna follow up on the decision to originally, if it started the school year and continued on, I mean, we gave the, we gave the staff an opportunity to work from home when we closed the district down virtually. But at the beginning of the year, we worked very closely with our attorney and made the decision not to hire virtual teachers in conjunction with advice from legal. So we can't just give them choice now without opening up a series of legal things that would have to happen. Of course, when we closed down virtually, I've given them a choice up until this point, but we're coming back to work, so I would like the teachers to come back to work as well. The other thing I just wanna comment on is what we're allowed to mandate in K to 12. We don't have the same freedoms that potentially the universities have. We can't say every kid is gonna be tested, every staff member's gonna be tested, everyone's gonna be vaccinated. Some of those decisions are made at the state level, but we certainly don't have them here, local control over those things. I just wanted to make sure that people were clear on that.
Is there anybody else? Mark had his hand up, and then Tracy.
Dr. Youngberg, just, I just had a quick clarification. Scenario one, what's the status of the high school? Was it hybrid, virtual?
Yes, everyone is, I'm recommending everyone come back on February 1st in the hybrid model, including the high school. It's after that, it's the move from hybrid to full in-person where the high school is still yet to be determined because they can't cohort.
Well, if we can't cohort, how do we do hybrid with high school?
They, the high school's not co-horted.
Right, so how do you do the hybrid?
They still, no, I'm sorry.
Talking about the building.
When they come back and- We have cohort A and cohort B, that's when they show up. But within the building, a high school, everyone has their own individual schedule. When you think about an elementary school, this group of kids stays with this teacher for the whole day, or this mini-team functions at the middle school for the whole day. It's not the same at the high school, everyone has an individual schedule, eight different teachers, seven different, you know. So they're in cohorts, but within their school day, they're not staying together as one group.
Okay.
Good question, though, I guess that is confusing if you're not living it, I understand.
Yeah. Tracy Lambert.
Dr. Youngberg, how does that work at the middle school? Because I know some grades switch classes and some stay together, I'm not sure how that works. So what's the difference, looking at it cohort-wise and stuff like that, between the middle school and the high school?
So I believe they've been switching teachers around so that if there's a four-person mini-team, the teachers move amongst the kids, the kids stay in their group. They obviously have classes they switch, but it's not to the degree the high school's intermingling.
What about specials? Do they cohort as that same group during specials, or?
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the teachers on here made a comment about having to be on a cart and roll in, that's what they're talking about. They're rolling to those classes so the classes stay intact, so we're not mixing kids.
Okay, but we're still exposing the adults to all those different students, and then going to another one?
And that's true, but again, our data is not suggesting that we're transmitting the virus in school.
I understand that, and I, you know, relate to you earlier today what my concerns were and stuff like that. I just wanna make sure that we're doing what's best for everybody. I understand that, you know, the elementary students especially need that face-to-face time with the teachers and stuff. Do you have any data on what the attendance was before the holidays at the high school? Is it worth having the building open for that?
I can, we have attendance data for every week of the year. Do you have the data, Neil?
I don't doubt that, so.
You do, we've been tracking every single piece of information imaginable.
Hold on. For your attendance data information, we have the high school. The high school, actually, close to, right around before we went virtual, the high school was running pretty close, 3% to 4%. In the last couple of weeks, they've been somewhere around, you know, 5%, 6% different than last year. But they are one of the schools that is the closest to last year's attendance rates. And again, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm not, it's okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I thought you were done. But how many students are actually showing up in the building at the high school level?
Right before Christmas, it was a really low number, very low.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That's okay. I'm just thinking, is it really worth it for two or three kids in a class for a teacher to have to do double the work at the high school level? To do the in-person and the virtual work and have to go back and forth between teaching in both of those and prepping for both eventualities?
I feel like it's probably really worth it to someone to have the ability to send their kid in person. I know I have one of those kids at home who's not a virtual learner. If he didn't have that choice, he would be doing worse than he is now with the choice. So I feel like there's other families just like that out there that would, that their kids would benefit from having the opportunity to be in person.
Mr. Brothers, do you have any different data, or is it?
I, yeah. In terms of the numbers of students, I can get that to you tomorrow. Like, I'd have to look, I pulled a report I have, I don't have access to my direct folder on this laptop. So I can get that for the board for tomorrow. Like, you, I could do like the last several days before we went hybrid, the number of students attending per day.
Because I know the high school went hybrid before everybody else did?
Yeah.
Anymore, so.
They did.
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
All right, just, you know, if it's worth it, if it's worth opening the building and doing the sanitizing and stuff like that every night, and a bigger one every Wednesday and all of that kinda stuff. If it's worth it for 10 kids in the building, then maybe it's not worth it. And I know those kids need it, I have an ADHD learner at home who's going crazy learning online too, was so excited to be able to go in for a lab today at school. But, you know, I have a student like that as well. But for the greater good and for our teacher's sanity, is that really the best way to?
Right, I hear you loud and clear, I appreciate your feedback. I just, I feel like we need to have a student-centered review on this, we just do.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Katina?
So I've been listening to everybody, and I thank everybody for your comments. At the Wyndham Task Force to Prevent Child Abuse and Neglect today, we had a group of about 16 regional people here in Wyndham. And we were really concerned, and I'll bring this up, about the side effects of COVID-19 and just directing us toward thinking about the cognitive impairment that might be happening long-term, not only for the staff, but also for the children who have been positive, which is one of the side effects that might be happening. So as a community, we need to start thinking about that, that's one. And another issue was mental health workers that were there very concerned about suicidal ideations in teenagers because of the isolation. But that's one, even if 10 kids would come to the high school, I understand the, all that it is involved. But we need to start moving the kids to as safe as possible, prevent that isolation. There is an increase in alcohol use and substance abuse in parents. Parents calling mental health workers sobbing because they are also so frustrated and so cannot, not deal with all the stressors. So mental health is a big issue. Isolation makes it worse. Kids are in crisis as we adults too. And then there is the physiological additional constraint that might be happening secondary to the long-term effects of COVID-19 that we have to start as a school system trying to understand and deal with that too. So as the president of the Hartford Healthcare offered to have a community forum with medical personnel to educate all of us, so we're gonna put that out there for teachers and parents and have a community forum on the side effects. So there are so many layers that it's painful. But I agree with the present recommendation that Dr. Youngberg is saying. Because I am a survivor of COVID, as many of you know. I'm really afraid for kids' safety at home with parents or feeling despair.
Thank you, Katina. Is there, Paula?
One of the letters that we received, I thought was also very telling. It was a letter from a parent. One of the comments that was made was, as families are trying to provide daycare as they attempt to work, these children are being exposed to many different families and many different people in the community. And I think that is a big issue and a big problem. Just like we see, you know, in our facility where we have had COVID, it tends to come from the community. And the more interactions that are occurring in the community, the more you're going to see those numbers go up. So I guess what I'm saying is, children in school are most likely much more safe and limited in their community interactions. Whereas, you know, again, parents trying to find supervision for their children during the day while they're trying to work are probably exposing their children more in that scenario.
Is there anybody else who wants, from the board who wants to raise, make a comment or raise a question? So, so hearing, nobody from the board. Dr. Youngberg, we are, you know, putting our faith in you as board members. And Dr. Youngberg has always kept her door open to hearing from us. But you have a lot to, a lot more information from folks tonight. And you've made your recommendation, I think people know where you stand. And I guess we'll move forward from there.
Go into the hybrid.
Questions?
Yes, Jaime, I'm sorry, did you have a hand up earlier and I didn't see you?
No, 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 I didn't. I'm just, I've been just listening to everyone, and I know it's a very difficult decision. But I have, my question is, we know the Dr. Youngberg's recommendation. Are we voting on that, or is that a done deal?
No, we have no action item on the agenda to vote on it, Jaime.
So the kids are coming back in the hybrid mode on Monday?
On Monday, as recommended by Dr. Youngberg.
So if she is recommending, then somebody has to take up on that recommendation, right? Or either she's making a decision, not a recommendation. I guess that's my point, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
This is not a recommendation as I see it, it's a decision that she has made, and that's the way it's gonna go. So recommendation is something that somebody may take up on it or not?
Thank you for, thank you for that clarification, Jaime. Generally, the board has operated on this matter with Dr. Youngberg making the decision. We did not put an action item on the agenda tonight for the board to vote to affirm or not affirm that decision. Dr. Youngberg communicated with the board in her regular Friday meeting notes that she'd like to hear back from people if they had any questions or concerns about this. Today, this afternoon, the only person, as of this afternoon, we'd only heard from two members of the board about this, and that was Tracy Lambert and Mary Galucci. And neither one of them suggested that we be doing anything different tonight. So the board always has the option of deciding to, deciding to say that they want to take a vote on this. But it's very clear that the superintendent and the way that schools operate has these final decisions. And unless somebody on, Jaime, unless somebody on the board would like to make a recommendation tonight that we call a special meeting or amend tonight's meeting to take action on this, we're gonna let the superintendent decide how she wants to deal with it. So if you wanna make a motion, you can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion. Or either that, or we strike the word recommendation because it was not a recommendation, it was a decision. So either one, but I like to, you know, discuss it because I think the data is not favorable. You know, Wyndham is in trouble. We've seen a lot of things, and I, and I'm very apprehensive of at this moment in time, a series of kids going back to school.
So Jaime, what motion are you making?
I'm just, you know, I don't know, you told me that I could make a motion.
Yeah, I'm asking if you wanna make a motion.
Well, if I like make a motion, is that the board vote on Dr. Youngberg's recommendation? Otherwise, it will be just her decision, not her recommendation.
Okay, so Jaime is putting-
Language is important, okay?
Jaime?
Yeah.
We have to vote to amend the agenda, which we can do because it is a regular board meeting, it's not a special board meeting. So your first motion would have to be to amend the agenda to take action on Dr. Youngberg's recommendation to reopen the schools and hybrid model on February 1st. Is that the motion you're making?
Yes, that's the motion I'll make.
Okay, do I get a second on that motion?
For discussion, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mark Doyle will second the motion to amend the agenda for the board to add an action item onto the board agenda to take action on the recommendation to reopen on February 1st by Dr. Youngberg. Motion's been made, seconded?
May I make a point?
Yes.
I believe that the governor's resolution, executive action, whatever it was called, said that it is at the superintendent's discretion. I believe we're micromanaging here, we've given her our opinion, ultimately do her evaluation, and I know she's painfully aware of that. And she's listened to all of our opinions. I'm not sure that it's towards the decision as opposed to the superintendent's decision. And she knows that, and I've had this conversation with her, that when she has the information, when she has our input, it's her decision and it's her responsibility then to stand by that decision.
I agree with you, Tracy, but I-
Here, Dr. Youngberg.
I agree with you, Tracy, and that's why I'm gonna vote against this motion. But the motion's been made and on the floor.
Okay, thank you.
That is the case, somebody else, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mark has his hand up, and then I think Katina had her hand up.
I second the motion for discussion purposes. I certainly agree with Tracy and with you that the state has left us in the superintendent's hand. But I see no problem with us voting to- But I see no problem with us voting to uh not approve but to to endorse her her decision. So I'm not taking it away from her. I'm just saying maybe we need, as a board, we need to communicate to the to the community that we endorse her decision. I don't know if that changes the motion or not, but that was my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Katina?
Uh, I was just gonna say that I I would vote uh against the recommendation to amend the board agenda as I think like Ms. Lambert that it's it's up to the superintendent to uh make the final decision.
Okay, so may I say something now?
Uh, yes, Jaime.
Yes, okay, then then my then my issue would be to amend, you know, the su- the superintendent's language. It is not a recommendation. It is her decision. And so it should be stated in the minutes that the superintendent decided that we will go hybrid. She didn't recommend to anybody. She made a decision. I don't wanna micromanage. And uh, um, Dr. I mean, Ms. Lambert is fine. We should not be back to managing. But this is an important issue and I think it should be clear how a decision was made and by whom.
Are you withdrawing your motion? Are you, are you with, are you withdrawing your motion and then just uh making a recommendation that it be in the minutes it be reflected that the superintendent was reporting on her her decision-making?
Right, it is obvious, right, her, that no one is gonna support not to follow that decision. So there's no point in I continue with a different motion. Yes, I'm receiving that motion, but I am suggesting that the word uh recommendation be changed to decision for the matter of records.
This is.
Hold on, hold on a second. Jaime has said that he is going to rescind his motion. I need the person who seconded it, which is Mark, to agree to that.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Ildah, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I just wanna say that I think this is an extremely difficult decision. The Dr. Youngberg has taken all measures to get input from everyone through conversations tonight previously and surveys before making her decision. And I support her decision a hundred percent as a parent and as a board member.
Thank you, Ildah. So Jaime has withdrawn his motion. Mark has agreed to that as the person who seconded the motion. Um, can we, for the purposes of um this clarification, um agree as a board that we understand that Dr. Youngberg is making a recommendation to us which is going to be translated into a final decision by her. Which she always has the, she always has, she's coming into this meeting with a recommendation. She heard a lot of input during public comment and she wants always to hear from the board. And ultimately, um, she could decide at the end of this meeting that that recommendation is going to stand and she's not gonna change it. Um, but Dr. Youngberg, I'm gonna give you a chance to um speak, um chime in here if you would like to.
So you're exactly right. And even in my presentation, which I'm just gonna pull up real fast, if you notice, and the, I put that the final decision would be communicated tomorrow. Knowing that we could have a conversation, there could be information shared, something could happen in this meeting that made me change what I was recommending. Right now, I'm not feeling that way. I'm feeling like my recommendation is still intact. I still believe the things that the experts are telling us, but I do, I did plan to communicate the final decision tomorrow to everyone. So i- I don't know if it's a matter of semantics. The word recommendation versus final decision, I'm not sure, but I know that I've I've talked to and gathered data from every public health expert um possible before before ma- coming to the conclusion that this is what I wanna recommend we do.
Are we okay with that, folks? Can we move on to the next item on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Thank you. And I know there are members of the public who 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 are are confused by this thought that we would be making a vote. And I wanna just reiterate that the board, that this is the man, the day-to-day management of the schools is the superintendent's job. And um, if you go to any board um trainings about the roles and responsibilities of the board, it it does not entail us stepping in on the day-to-day management. Obviously, the superintendent has gone to great measures to get input from the board and have conversations with the board. And um, you may remember at the at the meeting we had before the holidays, there was a lot of feedback from the board. And also at our last meeting, there was a lot of feedback about whether or not we should open uh hybrid in the middle of of January. And the superintendent does listen to the feedback at these meetings. And that is why I'm very happy that so many spoke up, so many people spoke up from all across the spectrum because that is the kind of feedback we need to hear as we're making decisions for this community, at the school community. So thank you very much. And I wanna go on. Well, what else do you have to report to us before we go on to discussion items? You have the sports?
Yeah.
Can we, can we move it along a little?
So, can you see my screen?
No.
Oh, okay, that's part of the issue. Okay, so here's the information about winter sports. On January 14th, the CIAC Board of Control approved winter sports. They even put a a consent form that was drafted by the attorneys. Um, they recognize that all different, different, different districts will be starting their return dates at different times, like obviously if Wyndham, if the board decides that Wyndham's gonna participate in winter sports, they can't start before the kids come back to school, um which right now the recommendation is for Monday. Um, they've canceled the state championships, but um, which allows them to continue or to play more games than they had originally planned. Um, I think I originally told the board that the only sports that the high school was gonna be running was the boys and girls basketball. Um, I learned today that there's also an opportunity for boys and girls indoor track and field. And then there's, which we already talked about, the non-contact conditioning that is part of the winter plan. Uh, we also have the consideration of whether or not we're gonna offer boys and girls basketball at the middle school. Now, if you remember correctly, back in the fall, all of the local superintendents had made a decision not to allow middle school sports. Um, because they, at that point, we didn't know a whole lot about anything. Uh, and they were concerned that it was one more layer of trying to keep the kids safe. Um, there are some districts that are opting out of the middle school sports and some that are opting in. So I wanted to give the board an opportunity to consider whether or not Wyndham would opt in or out. We didn't have to make the decision last time because the decision was made for us as a region. Everyone in the region said no middle school sports. So the board does have to consider tonight, um, whether or not they're gonna allow the the Wyndham High School students to take part in the winter sports options that are on the screen there and whether or not we're gonna consider middle school sports. DPH has signed off on the CIAC plan. They have made it clear that they do acknowledge that sports presents an opportunity for the virus to be spread. They have put in some mandated mitigation strategies to reduce that, the, you know, the potential for transmission. They still believe in the benefits of sports and they believe that if they don't allow school sports, that there's the opportunity for kids to play in other forums that might not be as heavily monitored, which would put the public health at risk. So that's where DPH is coming from. Um, again, you know, we we know we're gonna have to work at making sure the kids are safe. I think we, I think we understand how to do it much better now than we did before. Um, so I see the, I see the benefits of allowing the kids and I also understand the risks of allowing the kids. And I have Mr. Thompson on the call if there's any specific sports questions.
Yeah, we have, it is, it is a discussion item next on the agenda. So, and we could call on Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, everyone.
What, yeah, can you, yeah, can you just hold on a second um until we have finished with the superintendent's report? Um, is there anything else you wanna report on to us before we move on?
Just to give you the update on the ad hoc elementary consolidation.
That's under item.
Okay, and then the only other thing was to let you know that we had a virtual meeting yesterday with our state representatives. Uh, May Flexer, Susan Johnson, Brian Smith. We explained to them our issue with the Food Services Department running that giant deficit. We're projecting about 1.4 million dollar loss. They assured us that they are working at the state level to make the Food Service Department whole. So more to come on this. They asked for some information from the district, which we will get to them, but it was nice to hear that they're working behind the scenes to get um the money back because it's completely COVID-related and it's not the Food Services Department. It's not their fault. They've been working overtime to make sure that everyone has access to nutritious meals in the community. So it was good news to hear. One of my favorite virtual meetings so far. That's all I have.
That's pathetic that your favorite virtual meeting so far was.
Virtual meeting, I could promise you. They were telling us they might get us 1.4 million dollars. It was a good meeting.
Okay, so, um, thank you. Uh, we're gonna move on to discussion items and the discussion item up is winter sports and I and since uh James Thompson is here with us as the athletic director, uh, would the board think it's okay to let him share any information he'd like to share with us? Um, give a thumbs up if that's makes sense to you, board members. Okay, so, um why don't you start off and and let us know what what you're, anything you wanna convey to us about this?
Well, I definitely could tell you that CIAC, the Sports Medicine Committee and the DPH has spent a lot of time uh planning for this uh potential opportunity. So, right now, um, some of the sports that apply to us that we can offer at our high school right now are boys and girls basketball. Uh, boys and girls indoor track, even though there wouldn't be uh indoor meets, there would be opportunities in the spring where if the weather was decent, we could have a like a dual meet with another school. And wrestling, uh, since there will not be a wrestling season, uh, they have recommended that uh the wrestling programs offer conditioning. Uh, to sum it up, basically, most of the uh you know, the common uh similarities, uh, every winter sport is required to have a mask um from the beginning of practice to the end. Uh, you know, there may be some, uh, there would be some mask breaks that were offered, I'll just say, in basketball. Uh, at the four-minute mark, uh, there would be a pause where teams can go to the bench and they can have a a short mask break uh with like no coaching feedback. It would just be for the players to catch their breath and then they'd be able to, uh, they'd have to put it back on. We've, I've met with a lot of our coaches. We have a lot of mitigation strategies that have been set by the CIAC and our Eastern Connecticut Conference of Athletic Directors. As to, you know, how many a team can bring to a competition, how many we're allowed to have on our sideline, what the what the setup of the uh, the benches should look like. We have a cleaning procedure uh and recommended solutions for the ball. You know, I've talked about, I talked to our coaches about soldiers, social distancing from the players. You know, if we are approved, we will be having, uh, you know, active meetings tomorrow with the kids that are showing interest uh in participating and going over, you know, their expectations uh if we are to uh return. I've met with a lot of our our kids this week. Uh, you know, 11 o'clock, we have that free time and you know, I've had some virtual meetings and uh, you know, I, it, these are really tough times and um, you know, a lot of them are ready to do whatever it takes. Our coaches are ready. I've met with Coach Gonzalez and Coach Martino are are two basketball coaches. I've met with Coach Rizley for wrestling and Coach Knopka for track. Uh, you know, we're ready to go. As far as like, you know, track and wrestling, um, you know, we do have, uh, we will be establishing uh practice times of uh small pods. So we won't have like a large number of people like circulating through a weight room or, you know, a practice where we'll have it broken up. Uh, for something like track, it would be, uh, you know, based on your your uh specific, uh, distance runners would be in a, would be like a pod. Sprinters would be like a pod. Throwers are their, usually their own separate pod. And uh, we can plan our practices uh around that. And once again, uh you know, we will communicate with the parents. Uh, we will communicate. Uh, we've already communicated with our officials and you know, it's it's pretty well planned out. You know, the the students would not have access to the uh, the locker rooms. They'd have to bring their own bottles. Bringing, um, you know, spare masks, those those would be recommended. And uh, also, you know, we we're gonna be uh stressing the open line of communication. You know, if you're sick, do not come. Do not come to practice. You know, it's the safety of you and it's the safety of the team. You know, if we are able to get an experience, um, you know, we will, we will make sure we are doing our best to represent the school and the health of uh everybody in the community.
Thank you. Now, are there any uh questions? Um, we're not gonna take a vote till under action items, but are there any comments or questions? Mark? And then Tracy.
Hi, thank you. I have, I guess I have a couple of comments. First off, it breaks my heart to say this as a wrestling parent and as running the fundraising for the team for 10 years, even though I only had eight years as a parent, I stayed on two years after that. But I just, non-contact wrestling is just, it's an oxymoron. They put those kids in a tiny room with poor ventilation and the whole, it's a contact sport. I don't know how you do not, non-contact all the way to themselves.
I think we're basically, I'm sorry, I interrupted. My apologies.
I have two questions. So yeah, so that's my, I I really have concerns about that and I and I love wrestling and I love to coach, but it's just but my other question is how are we gonna handle the issue of virtual attendance versus actual school attendance? Again, I go back to my comments in the fall. If I can't have the kids come to school, I don't see how I can have the kids come to play basketball. So how how are we handling the issue of of attendance?
Well, the, with the attendance, I think that would have to be uh the decision that would be made by uh the current administration and um and the the board. You know, to establish that. Um, going back to your first question, basically, uh, Coach Doyle, it would be, you know, the wrestling group, obviously, we would not, you know, the way I phrased it. You know, we wanted to make it specific when we say there's non-contact wrestling, but these kids are gonna be conditioning. It's gonna be running outside. It'll be, you know, use of the weight room inside uh plyometrics and small pods and, you know, obviously, social distancing, you know, station work, stuff like that to keep them active because a lot of them haven't been, you know, um, a lot of the kids uh have been out of shape. You know, this past summer, when we came back to summer conditioning, uh, after, you know, time since uh March, when, you know, we went into the shutdown, uh, a lot of the kids, that was the basic feedback from all of the athletic directors. The kids were out of shape and just they're, they didn't have the best of habits and, you know, we wanna give an opportunity for them to, uh, you know, if if provi- if approved, uh, an opportunity for them to uh learn to just be with a group. And, you know, to be a part of something, something, you know, you know, that a lot of our wrestlers have benefited from uh being with Coach Rizley and Coach Taggertie and kinda helping push them through to, for their education purposes. Social, emotional wellbeing, you know.
Mark, did you have any other questions? Okay, Tracy Lambert next.
Coach Thompson, first off, I wanted to um give my condolences for your coaching department that has lost a giant in your basketball um division. Anyways, um, I'm wondering if coaches have concerns if there are extra expenses that are going to come along with some of these precautionary measures? And if, especially as far as wrestling is concerned, maybe you do ABA B like you're with classrooms to keep those cohorts together. And, you know, if it's 10 degrees like it's supposed to be tomorrow, obviously, they're not going outside and running around for too long. And it doesn't make sense for them to stay after school for a 10-minute run or something like that they could do at home and then go warm up. So I'm just curious what what concrete things are you planning on putting in place? My my ultimate concern is the staff and the students. Obviously, I don't want anybody getting sick. You know, and and with wrestling, Mark's right, you know, there's generally a lot of touching, but I don't doubt that conditioning can take effect. And I'm thinking specifically of our juniors and seniors. And I'm thinking specifically of our juniors and seniors who have now been robbed of two years in this sport. These seniors will have had no junior prom, no senior prom, none of this stuff, you know, as it stands right now. And I don't want to rob them of another season of sports, but I also want to make sure that they're really safe and that there are as few chances of, you know, passing this, this contagion on as possible.
Thank you for those kind words on Coach Gil Day. He's just an amazing person. Certainly going to miss him. One of the reasons why I love being a part of this district. We would be, you know, right now, we are going to be cohorting. We would definitely have groups cohorted. You know, whatever, you know, for a wrestling group, whatever their numbers are, we would break it up according to recommendations by the, by the DPH. You know, if it's a time in the weight room, we're going to have the kids, you know, set up in a particular area. You know, that's where they're going to be working and we'll have, we have wiped down, you know, procedure. You know, cleaning up after returning weights, everything like that. You know, I've, I've definitely been through it, you know, just going to my fitness facility and you know, I, I have a lot of supplies. I've been, you know, I, we have plenty of masks, plenty of cleaning supplies. You know, you know, I think we can, I think we can handle that. We, it will be controlled. We will be able to control it. If it's just three different types of stagger, you know, stagger times that we can offer it, or if it's just, you know, we offer it twice a week to a kid who's, you know, pending their cohort, that would be the day that they come in. I, I think we can manage that. I would definitely be talking with administration and our health department as to what might be best for that situation.
Okay, I totally respect your, your response to that and your job as the Athletic Director. I think you've been doing a fabulous job last year and this year. I just want to make sure that you know that if there's something that comes up or if there's something that you need, feel free to reach out to the Board of Ed. If I have to donate masks myself, I have no problem with that, but as a board, we should be completely in support of this, in my opinion, and making sure you have everything you need to keep these students safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
You see, we have Mary up next and then Paula and then Katina.
Yes, thank you. This is Mary. I just wanted to say that if the Health District and the, you know, Public Health Department, the school, State Department of Education are saying that the sports with these mitigation measures can proceed, I don't see any reason why we would not allow them if we are allowing the schools to proceed. So I admire the efforts to do these mitigation procedures. Also, with regard to virtual attendance, a virtual student is a student if they are fully engaged and attending. I, I really feel that we would be getting into some serious equity issues if we said that a virtual student could not participate in athletics. I mean, athletics is part of a student's education. And I don't fully understand that argument and we can't know why a student might prefer for a certain period to, to do fully virtual. And that is an option we are offering during this COVID period. So, I mean, I don't know about the future, but I just want to say I think that a student is a student and athletics is a very important part of an education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Paula and then Katina.
I guess, you know, I certainly agree with Mary. When we talk about the emotional support of our kids, I think athletics plays a major role in that. I think our coaches have proven through the year to safeguard our students. And I agree with Tracy, if there's anything that's needed, they need to let us know. Again, safety is the utmost important, but I, I certainly applaud, again, all of the coaches and you sir for the support you're giving our students. I think it's just incredibly important. Thank you.
Yes, Coach Thompson, you might remember about a year and a half ago when we were in a normal meetings. I came and volunteered to talk about social, emotional wellbeing and how not to trigger trauma. And now things are complicated. I just wanted to offer, again, volunteering and meeting virtually with the coaches if you think that's appropriate because the kids are coming with so much more baggage. So be happy to meet with the team again. That's it.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's related to sports. It's what, will you, maybe I missed it in your, in your rundown of things. But we're not thinking of having spectators, are we?
We've actually established as a conference that there would be no spectators. There's actually also a limitation as to what, you know, if we're hosting, you know, one of our opponents, Griswold, there would be a limitation as to how many they can even travel with. You know, on the sideline for a varsity match, there's a limit of 12. On the sideline for, for a JV, it would be a limit of 12. Only three certified coaches are allowed to be, you know, on the benches. You know, they can bring one score person, that's it. And we are also limited to a staff that we can bring.
Okay. So. So we're going to, if we, if we decide to move forward this, that, that would need to be communicated. I know that we got, I, I got something, some communications from angry parents last fall about not being able to be on the sidelines. I can imagine the same thing will happen again. So we just want to make sure we are very clear about that.
Ms. I, we're going to also look, we have two opportunities. I'm, I'm trying to work on the second one, but we did purchase, we were approved for two free Pixelot cameras. One of them, you can, one of them's already installed in the gymnasium. We tested it yesterday. If a person, and I know the kids are, have already purchased it, but there's a $10 a month subscription that a person can be a part of this network. They can watch all the games, they can make film out of it. And you can watch live games throughout the state. Like I was watching, I've been watching some of the high school games already where, you know, I'm just watching how they're doing, performing mitigations, you know, Rhode Island. I watched the game last night. And they can watch those games over and over, high definition. And we also had some opportunities this fall where we all, you know, it was more for the volleyball where we did Facebook, I'm sorry, YouTube Live. And they were able to broadcast the games. So we can look into that as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mark?
I, the only question I would have, I, I know we talked about, the AD mentioned that they would consider something in terms of the virtual versus in-class. I still think that's a critical decision we should have before we vote to approve or not approve this. So I know what's going on. I don't disagree with Mary necessarily that the virtual student is still a student, but a homeschool student is still a student. And I just think it's important that we clarify, you know, who, who we're going to put in this, in the, in the sports.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be a student who's in good standing regardless of whether or not they're virtual or coming in person?
It could be. It certainly could be. I'm just suggesting that if you, as a family, decided to keep your child virtual, maybe it's because you don't want the, the mixing with, with, with the other constituent. But if that's how the board feels about that, that's fine. I just, I'd like the question solved first.
I'd be here, I'd be interested in hearing from somebody from the administration on this.
Before Dr. Youngberg talks, I think we decided that already last, last, in the fall.
Right, I'm just asking, I'm asking her to affirm that, Katina.
I believe that we had students who were fully virtual participating in the, in the fall opportunities. I know, James, if you can confirm that, but I think we went round and round on this and that's what ended up happening.
Lynn?
Well, Jaime.
Yes, I, you know, we did discuss this. This issue came up last, you know, when we were in person. And we decided that a student, that, you know, that academic standing was the, the issue to consider. If a kid could participate in a sports or not, even if they were doing virtual schooling, but they had good standing, good academic standing, they could participate there. So what Katina said, I, I think she was right. We decided already.
Yeah. Thank you. I think that's what Dr. Youngberg just affirmed also, but James Thompson, is there anything you want to say about this? We can't hear you.
Apologies. Yeah, I believe it was discussed, you know, this, earlier this fall. I think Tracy Lambert actually brought up the, the topic. And Dr. Caban Owen, that they were a student whether virtual or in the hybrid mode.
Look, I just want to be clear, student whether in a virtual or a hybrid mode, but not if they're homeschooled. That has never been part of our cohort. That's a different distinction.
That's a different, a student.
He understands that.
A student enrolled in the district who's being taught and participating in classes.
Sometimes that distinction isn't always understood. I just want to clarify that, but I don't think we took action on it last fall because sports were canceled before we had that opportunity. And so I think that no action was taken to discuss it, if I remember correctly, and I may not. I'm only human.
I think we also decided that as long as their grades were good too.
That's what I said earlier, student.
Yeah, we don't, we don't win that policy.
Regardless of whether or not they're virtual or in-person could participate in a school sport if they're in good standing and enrolled in the district. That's what we had talked about and we're not taking action right now, but action is later on on the agenda. Is there anything more for discussion? Okay, so we're going to move on now. Before we move on, I just remind board members that we are going to go into a non-meeting later on this evening. It's going to be a long night to deal with a crossing guard contract issue. And in order to do that, because we're in a Zoom meeting and we can't go into a session during the Zoom meeting and then we'd be kicking everybody out and things like that, so we're going to do it via conference call. And Janet Testa emailed you all the conference call number to the board members and the appropriate staff. So just, I want you to be prepared when we get to that action item, that you don't say, how do we get into this meeting to talk about the crossing guard issue? Okay? So, committee reports. I asked that the reports, if there's anything to report, report it. If there's nothing to report, you don't need to say anything except there's nothing to report. And because it's, it's, we have a lot of business yet to do. So, finance and audit. Mark?
All right, three quick points. On the night's budget is the, on the night's agenda is the review or approval of the budget transfers, which the committee passed on. We also talked about the need to have a finance department person sign off or be a signer on all school-based accounts. So they can control, or at least they can see all the numbers and we recommended that go to the.
You cut yourself off, Mark. We can't hear you.
All right, I'm sorry. So we, we recommended that the Policy Committee look at our current policies for school accounts. And with the eye to the fact that we agree that some of the finance office should have the ability to, should be a signer on the account so they can actually call the bank and see the numbers. And the final thing we talked about was the, how the COVID effect on our budget in terms of some line items are in surplus like our staff, where we're not hiring as many staff or replacing as many staff, whereas some areas of our budget are in deficit, as Tracy mentioned earlier, our food. And we discussed the need to communicate with the Board of Finance so we make sure that they understand how the money is being used. If we switch money from one account to another, so they don't think we're pulling the wool over their eyes. Plus, we wanted to make sure that they understand that just because we saved money and staff this year doesn't mean that next year, when we go back full-time, we will need to spend that money. That was not a savings because we were able to do with less. It was a savings because we just didn't fill those positions. So we want to make sure the Board of Finance fully understands, we'll need to go back to those levels. And that was it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mark? Okay, Tracy, is there anything, school planning and design that you'd like to report?
We meet at the beginning of the month and so we haven't met since the last board meeting.
Thank you. Policy Committee. Ilda?
Yes, just one thing to report. We have a meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock. That's it.
Thank you. Nothing to report from Executive Committee. We haven't met since our last meeting. And I know Dr. Youngberg had a slide that she wanted to present on the ad hoc elementary school consolidation committee.
So Paula is our new chair. Do you want me to let her do it? Should I share my screen, Paula?
Oh my gosh, I'm brand new. Help.
Absolutely. I summarized everything. Yeah, she, she got nominated, to her surprise. So Paula is the new committee chair for the ad hoc elementary consolidation committee. We met on Monday. They gave me the task of engaging the school governance councils at both Nachog and Wyndham Center because that is our smallest and our oldest school and the ones we're considering for potentially consolidating. For people watching at home, we are considering one elementary school be closed, but not until the year 2022, 23. So we have a lot of work to do between then, now and then. Our goal is for the ad hoc committee to meet one more time for the last meeting in February. And right now, we're hoping we have a recommendation to make to the board for that last meeting. We won't know until we engage the school governance councils and do some more work, but that's our plan right now. Paula, anything to add?
No. No, just that, you know, we do want to make sure that people understand that these are preliminary meetings. No decisions have been made as yet and we will continue to get input from the school governance councils and the board.
And we completely, oh, you're welcome. And we completely understand how emotionally attached people are to their elementary schools. So we, we get that. We know it's not going to be easy to even be listening to discussions like this.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions on that? From the board? Okay, so now we're on to action items. We have approval, we have a second, we had a previous reading on these three items recommended by the Policy Committee. One is on remote work, telecommunicate, telecommuting policy, telework. The second is on distance learning and the third is on gifts from suppliers and or contractors. And this is the second time we've seen these. They were in our board packet. Does anybody have? Well, first, I guess I'll entertain a motion. We could move to pass these all in one fell swoop or.
So moved. I make a motion to accept all three policies as stated in our packet.
Second. Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Katina. Any discussion, any questions from the board? Everybody clear? Okay, so I guess we'll take a roll call vote. Janet?
Ms. Ray? Who else? Surprised. He, yes. Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Haney?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Yes.
Dr. Gomez?
Yes.
Dr. Galucci?
I.
Ms. Hyde?
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. So those were approved. Now we need to have a motion to approve the budget transfers as recommended by the Finance and Audit Committee.
Agreed.
Seconded by Tracy. Any discussion? They were in your packet. I think they're pretty clear. Thanks to Rita. Everything's pretty clear these days when it comes to finances. So, hearing no discussion, we'll do a roll call.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Haney?
Hi.
Mr. Doyle?
Hi.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Hi.
Dr. Gomez?
Hi.
Dr. Galucci? Dr. Galucci?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries. The next thing is approval of a figure math grant, and it is the recommended that the board approve acceptance of a grant for up to $20,000 figure math site for figure math site licenses for use by teachers and students. And there was a, an explanation of it in our packet. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept and say thank you.
Motion made by Ilda, seconded by Paula. Any discussion, questions? Okay, we'll do roll call, Janet, please.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Haney?
Hi.
Doyle?
Yes.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Hi.
Dr. Gomez?
Hi.
Dr. Galucci?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Last action item tonight is possible action regarding winter sports. I would entertain a motion at this point.
So moved.
Well, what are you moving to do?
That we approved the winter sports. I'm sorry. I'm tired.
Okay, Katina. Katina's put a motion on the floor to move forward and approve winter sports. Do I get a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any discussion?
I would just like to make a friendly amendment, I think it's called, that as long as students, especially at the high school level, are fully in, are fully in hybrid. They don't have to be in person. They don't have to be online, but they have to be fully in hybrid. If we go back to fully virtual, then sports get suspended. And I hate to do that, but if we've gone back to fully virtual, then our infection rates are up. And not only don't I want to pass it on to more of our co-competitors, but I don't want to pass it to other towns either.
Okay, so do you expect, accept that friendly amendment?
I accept a friendly amendment.
Paula, okay.
Yes, thank you.
So the motion is on the floor to move forward and institute and allow winter sports to be played with all the conditions that surround that. And if we go back into virtual learning, then those sports would be suspended for the period of virtual learning. Is that what you're saying, Tracy? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, well, we'll take a vote then. Janet, it's over to you.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Haney?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Upstaying.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Tina? Oh, she said yes, okay.
Yes.
Dr. Gomez?
Hi.
Dr. Galucci?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll go into public comment before we go into a non-meeting for discussion concerning the memorandum of understanding with the Wyndham Public School crossing guards. So. Anybody? Tracy, are you raising your hand on your public comment?
Well, there isn't board comment anymore like there used to be.
Okay, go right ahead. Go right.
I just wanted to say that I obviously completely trust Dr. Youngberg and her staff to make the best decision in light of our students and our staff. Lynn alluded to an email I sent earlier to Dr. Youngberg herself, because I don't like to catch anybody unawares, that said that I think that we should set metrics and that those metrics should be met. If we're going to say we go back to virtual at 35 per 100,000, that's where we go back to virtual. If we feel and we have a district-wide dashboard, anybody can access that anytime of day and see exactly where we are. I think that we need to set a metric. If we say we're a data-driven district, if we say we're metrics-based, that those are things that we need to observe. We can't say 25, oh, well, too many of them are 25. Maybe we should go to 50. Maybe we should go to 40. As a board, I think it's really important that we set a metric and that we stick to it. Over a certain amount, that's when we go virtual. It's clear, it's concise, everybody's aware of it. If we say 25, we hit 25 per 100,000, that's when we go virtual. It's not arbitrary, it's not emotionally based, because people want to have their kids in school, people want to have their kids home, people are afraid to be at home, people are afraid to be at school. There's a whole gamut. And I referenced in the email that I heard all of those things, both in the supermarket and, you know, other places that I go, as well as at my place of business. Older people come in, say they live with their grandchildren and they're scared. Younger people come in and say they want to be in school. I hear the whole gamut. And I can feel sympathetic to all of that because I've had children and I've done this. I've had three kids in three different schools with three different sets of conferences and stuff like that. And I can understand all of these things, and I don't want to be unsympathetic to any one level. So if we set a parameter as a board or as a district that Tracy's, you know, recommendation, Dr. Youngberg's recommendation, I'm sorry, then that's where we stick to. And that gives us a sticking point. There's no flexibility in it. There's no ability to talk around different things. If we hit 50 per 100,000, sports get shut down. If we hit whatever the number is, the board decides. And the second thing is that I feel very strongly that if this board is willing to put our students back in school, then we should start having our meetings in person. Put our money where our mouth is, get our butts back in the building if that's what's safe. I've been in and out of a few of the buildings where I've needed things, dropped stuff off at the high school, picked stuff up, that kind of stuff, central office. I have no doubt that our staff is doing everything they can to put mitigating circumstances in place, but I think all nine of us and the superintendent, and I know Dr. Youngberg's been in the buildings, too, need to get in the buildings and have our board meetings there. People can come in virtually if they'd like to. We can have it as an open forum like we have before, but if we're saying that our buildings are safe for our staff and our students, our butts need to be back in those seats in the media center twice a month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We can't discuss that point because it's public comment. So I have three people who have signed up, Raquel, Luna, Kristen DeGray, and there's one other person.
Raquel said Kristen is first.
Well, it doesn't really matter. They're all going to go. So Raquel, you're signed up first in this line.
I think what the reference was, Lynn, is because Kristen wasn't chosen before. She was on the list and we moved her to the end. I think that's why she's saying she should go first.
I don't remember moving you to the end, Kristen. I'm very sorry.
That's okay. I had my, my name in the chat several times, but I know it's kind of hard.
Well, there were like, okay, so it's really hard to, it's really hard to facilitate a meeting and pay attention to 47 or 58 chats. So if your name was in the middle there, I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, go ahead. You got your three minutes.
Okay, I feel like most of my points now are moot points now that the meeting's over, but I did just want to say three things. The first is I agree with Tracy Lambert. If, if teachers and students are expected to be in schools, then the Board of Ed should be holding their meetings in person. The second thing is, is that I really would like to see the data that we keep referencing about all this data we have, that it's not being transmitted in schools. I'm not finding it, and I apologize if it is somewhere. So if someone could direct me there, I would very much, I would feel much better if I was able to see that data, and I'm sure a lot of other people would, too. And my third point is that I just, I just wanted to say, I don't quite understand how the board went from a couple weeks ago to recommending that we are virtual, and yet we're still in a position of really high cases. And now everyone seems to be on the other side. I'm not quite sure where that flip happened, but just an observation I'm making. Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel, Luna?
All right, thank you. I didn't speak earlier because I was very nervous for my daughter, and then she was fine. I did want to talk a little bit about the sports and clubs, and I know that my kids still aren't in high school, but I know that I was super involved in both high schools that I attended, and they were a big part of what helped me be successful in school. It was a good outlet, an escape from home. And I really think that if attendance is mandatory and they need to have their grades up in school, and it keeps them motivated to attend, that it should, I'm happy that we're moving forward with sports. And I, I would hope that the high schools also trying to plan to have clubs, some sort of labs, things like that. I know if I was a high school teacher, I wouldn't necessarily feel comfortable teaching hybrid or in-person because the cohorts aren't possible. But I think if they could have all virtual and be able to have kids come in with a cohort, the cohorts would be the clubs, the sports, and things like that, so that they're coming in, but it's limited. To me, that would be the best-case scenario. Again, it doesn't even affect me, but I do know a lot of high schoolers in town, and I feel like a lot of them are struggling. As far as what I had to say in addition to that, I was able to meet with the SGC of North Wyndham, and I'm happy that the principal there was able to discuss the budget and explain it. And I just look forward to discussions about the upcoming budget season. I feel like it's going to be harder for us to meet and get support. So I just hope that all of the SGCs are meeting and discussing it, just so that everyone is able to kind of canvas or speak and explain the budget to the people in their, their communities. For example, like I know the North Wyndham people more now because that's where my kids go. I can explain it to, you know, my, the parents of my, I can't talk. My, my daughter's classmates' parents to explain the budget to them so that hopefully we can get more support, because I know a lot of people don't know where the money goes. And I, and I also hope that the budget has an increased amount going toward technology so that we can get the technology working. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last person I have, I think, is Maura Martinez.
Yep, that's me. Thank you. So I know it, as Kristen said, it's kind of too late now, but I wanted to be able to express my views on this. I know as parents were saying that it, remote learning is difficult, it's not sustainable. And as a teacher, I teach eighth grade social studies and language arts at the middle school, so I completely agree with them. As Ms. Haddad said, we, I see both sides of it. I have two college students at home who are struggling to learn remotely, so I understand 100% that it's not ideal. But I feel like some people are kind of, as a result of how stressful a situation is, are losing sight of the seriousness of the crisis. We have hundreds of thousands of Americans that are dead. I think we haven't, as a collective society, even started to wrap our minds around how dire this crisis is. So I understand completely, as I said, I'm, I'm stressed out. I know the situation is untenable. I know I miss my students. I wish I could be in the classroom. I've had to completely redo my curriculum because my teaching style was always in pairs, in small groups, and I can't do that right now because, you know, I can't do that. So again, as a teacher, I'm frustrated. As a parent, I'm frustrated. I completely understand, but I just cannot get over the fact that Wyndham's infection rate is 118 per 100,000, and it's for more than four times the level that was identified as safe. I, I don't, I'm flabbergasted that we are even entertaining the notion of going back to school. So I just wanted to make that point. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark Doyle?
Yeah, thank you. Just a, just a quick comment, I guess. I understand the point about wanting to make sure the cohort number or the numbers, the infection rates, and, and if it goes to this level, we should go back to a certain level of teaching. But we made the point earlier that we were not to micromanage the superintendent. This was her decision. We didn't vote to approve or not approve her recommendation to go hybrid. I think it's something worth discussing, but maybe perhaps at the executive level, not, not tonight, we should look at the, this concept of, is there a breakpoint when we go back? I'd certainly like to hear Dr. Youngberg's theory on it, but we did make the point, it's her call. Now, if we decide that we're going to circumvent that by saying, okay, well, if you, it's your call up until these numbers, then we're going to make the call. I think that's a, a topic worth discussing, again, probably at the executive committee level. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're done with public comment. And so now I'll entertain a motion to go into a non-meeting for discussion concerning a memorandum of understanding with the Wyndham Public School crossing guards local.
So moved, Tracy Lambert?
Seconded by Mark. All those in favor? I, raise your hands.
I.
At unanimous. Okay, so we're going to go into this non-meeting. You need to put your cameras off and turn off your sound and go onto the phone call, board members and appropriate staff. Other people can wait in the Zoom for us if you want.
And at this time, if you're just waiting, I ask that you stay in mute. Thank you.
Neil, I think they should all sing while we're gone until we come back.
I think that's a horrible idea, but thank.
Okay. Let me just see if we have board members. We have Tracy, Katina, Ilda. I'm looking to see if we have Mark and Jaime. Mark's there. Paula's there. Mary, is Mary back?
I think Mary has to call back in.
Right, she has to call back in. Oh, there's Jaime. Okay. Mary, are you back with us?
I'm here.
Okay, great. So I will entertain a motion on possible regarding the memorandum of understanding with the Wyndham Public School crossing guards.
So moved.
So moved what? To do what?
To accept. I'm sorry.
To accept. So the motion was made by Ilda, seconded by who?
Paula made it and I seconded.
Jaime, okay, Jaime seconded it.
No, I seconded.
Well, it.
It's okay.
It's all right.
Don't fight over it, guys. I'm just calling it as I can see it on the screen.
That's right.
So, so motion made by Ilda, seconded by Jaime, and so I guess, is there discussion?
You, it's okay, Lynn.
It's, is there discussion?
Paula made the, Paula made the, the motion. I guess Ilda seconded. It's fine.
It's all good. No discussion on my part. Thank you very much to all the custodians and all the staff.
And, and we're very happy to be doing this for the crossing guards, giving, given what they do for the safety and well-being of, of the students. Any further discussion?
Smile.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote then.
Ms. Ray?
Yes, definitely.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Haney?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Dr. Caban Owen?
Hi.
Dr. Gomez?
Hi.
Dr. Galucci?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde?
Hi.
Thank you.
So that's all our business for tonight. Our next board meeting will be on February 10th, and we have a budget workshop on February 17. Our next board meeting will be on February 10th, and we have a budget workshop on February 17th and March 3rd. So make sure you mark your calendars. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Lynn, you just might want to see the comments that happened while we were gone, just for your information.
I saw the comments.
Okay, just making sure, that's all before we adjourn, you can see them.
Yeah. Thank you.
I move, we move.
Who, I need a motion to adjourn.
I move, we move. It's Tracy.
Tracy.
Okay.
Seconded by Mark. Meeting adjourned at
Good night, everybody.
10:04. Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Good night.
Drive safely, Tracy.